Good afternoon. It is 9:01 and we're going to call this meeting to order. Before we go into our budget workshop, I know we have some speakers, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, sir. We're going to have several speakers. Carlos Aguilar III.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Aguilar III. I'm the district director for LULAC in this region. And one of my concerns is the budget, okay? The other concern is the school closures. I think that one should really reconsider the school closures. I know that it's been discussed in the past. But I think that you need to look at other alternatives before you close so many schools. You're closing some of the schools that shine in our community such as Lamar Elementary. I'm the product of EPISD. I went to school at EPISD. I graduated from EPISD. I'm a taxpayer. I own a real estate company in El Paso. And I'm concerned about the closure of so many schools. I'm also concerned about the budget. You know, you have a beautiful building here. It's beautiful, but there's so many empty buildings out there. I don't see a plan where you're going to sell assets instead of closing schools, assets that are already out there. You know, we remodeled Alta Vista School several years ago, before your time. And it's empty, okay? Yet we poured millions upon millions of dollars in this beautiful building. Sorry to rain on your parade, but you could sell this building and stop the closure of so many schools. You also have an audit that you haven't completed. Why don't you wait before you take such action? As some of you know, I've dealt with large budgets. As a former board of trustee and chairman of the Board for El Paso Community College, we had challenges, but we didn't cut classes. As a county commissioner, we had challenges, but we didn't cut services. Sometimes we had to cut salaries. How about cutting salaries of some of those high-paid administrators? You know, when we have to tighten the budget, we have to look at everything. Also, I hear rumors, and maybe they're just rumors, but that you will not seat the board until all elections have taken place.
Time.
That's not democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonor Arcos. Leonor Arcos. Xavier Miranda.
Javier Miranda, a retired teacher. EPISD Board President Irovali's proposal to deny seating incoming trustees who have won their respective May elections is part of a larger coordinated effort by right-wing ideologues to use our public schools to usurp democracy. One must pause and give serious consideration to the recent legal history of our school district. Wherein corrupt superintendents such as Lorenzo Garcia, Juan Cabrera, and their lackeys like Damon Murphy and Carmen Arieta-Candelaria exploited our children to enrich themselves. Then, these in turn empowered compromised trustees such as disgraced Carlos Cordova and Dory Fennenbach, of whom also used their positions for profit. This is why assertions of conflict of interest are made against Mr. Irovali, whose resume includes consulting for our right-wing anti-education governor of Texas, Greg Abbott, as well as Irovali's current employment with the El Paso Association of Contractors. However, as fascist forces take the helm at all levels of government, we are seeing an alignment of our education system to promote an authoritarian agenda, effectively posing an existential threat to our democracy. Mr. Call, I'm right here. Support for Irovali's proposal will only accelerate a pedagogy of religious indoctrination, the banning of books, censorship of our history, closing of community schools, and the suppression of academic freedoms. This board must reject Irovali's egregious attempt to undermine the political will of our predominantly Latinx community. Otherwise marginalized students will continue to endure threats of deportation, toxic environmental conditions, systemic racism, and educational inequity. Those entrusted in union and political leadership positions, yes, must join our community in defending our public schools from authoritarianism. And it is through education that we empower our children to dispel notions of fascism and to nurture social responsibility. The outcome of this board's actions is vital at this juncture in this current historical moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Ramirez.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Diana Ramirez, a parent of two kids at EPISD. I'm here today to talk about item 1B, which is your board, your budget process, and a very concerning conversation that happened in the same place on April 1st, when a board president, Israeli Irovali, and trustee Isabel Hernandez had a conversation regarding the budget process and the installment of newly-elected trustees. Trustee Irovali was very clear about his intent not to seat any of the winners of the May 30 election until any resulting runoff elections were concluded. This conversation is alarming to us and our community. It's clear to community members present today that this is an attempt to keep your creed-backed majority to stay in power longer, to dictate your next year's budget. This is an egregious assault on our democratic process and is a blatant disregard for the will of the voters. Any trustee who wins their seat outright in the May 30 election should be sworn in at the May board meeting. Denying voters their voice and usurping our democratic processes would set a dangerous and oppressive precedent in our school government. We urge this board to respect the will of the voters and install any new trustees at the next board meeting so they can start working for their constituents. We need to let the people have their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanne Crotcher.
Hello, I'm a parent of three children who went to EPISD schools and I have seven grandkids who are also currently enrolled in EPISD schools. I have a daughter who's a teacher, a daughter-in-law who's a SPED diagnostician. And I got a very alarming email last night, also saying that you intend not to install the duly-elected new school board members in this May 3 election. I am very concerned about that, and I am concerned as to the reason why you would do that. And it seems the reason is because you want to complete an agenda that you've already talked about. To deny a duly-elected official taking their seat, to me, seems illegal. Do you have, I'm asking this board, do you have the legal power to do that? Anybody have an answer? No? I'd like to know that answer, because if you don't have the power, I think as a group, we need to stop that. Because when you elect someone, they have a right to take their office, and I'm very concerned about this. I'm also concerned about the new voucher system that they're putting in place in Texas. It's going to take millions of dollars away from public schools. That's going to be very hard on our students, our teachers, and the other staff. So as a parent and a grandparent and a mother of two people who work in this district, I'd like to know what we're going to do about that. And if you're intending to stop them taking their seats, I think we're, as a community, we're going to take action to see that you don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross Moore.
We're taking all the public comment at the forefront because they blend together, sir.
Board President Irovali, board members Messiah Vedra, my name is Ross Moore, President El Paso AFT. I have three simple questions. Trustee Hanani, words out that you plan to reopen the schools this summer if your slate wins. So my question is, first of all, is that true or not? Second of all, is, have you actually thought through the consequences of doing that? My second question is for administration. Have you done any contingency planning on the potential, if Miss Hanani's slate wins, of reopening Zavala and the other schools over the summer? And lastly, I'm still waiting on the answers to the three questions we asked at the last board meeting. Apparently you're refusing to answer them, which only can lead me to one conclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it. Unless you want to call that other person, but... Leonard Arcos? We called twice. That's it.
Ms. Vedra?
Well, thank you, President Irovali and trustees and the community for being here this morning. This is one of many budget workshops that we'll be conducting as we lead up to the final budget proposal for the board to consider for approval. Today's budget conversation is going to be focused on sharing with the board information about our healthcare program and benefits for employees, in addition to providing you an update associated with where we are in terms of our budget development, some of the work that we've done to reduce costs from various areas of the school district. In addition, we're sharing with you some models associated with the latest information that we have from Austin in terms of what has recently passed the House. We are still waiting for the Senate bill and the House bill to be negotiated before the final, you know, funding bill is presented. And so we do apologize for the lack of backup for the posting for today's meeting. But the situation, given the fact that we're in a legislative session, is very fluid. And so the team is working to crunch numbers based on the latest information that we get from Austin. So we appreciate your patience. In any other circumstance, we would do our due diligence and post information for the public. So we appreciate your patience, and thank you so much. So I'm going to hand it over to Mata Aguirre so that she can launch us with today's conversation.
Thank you, Messiah Vedra. Good morning, Board President Irovali, trustees, Messiah Vedra. So this morning, we will be focusing on two main agenda items. First one being a healthcare program update. And then the second one is budget development updates that consist of operating costs as well as compensation scenarios and conversations. And I'll start with a healthcare program update that Ms. Patty Cortez, our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, will be presenting to you all this morning.
Good morning, President Irovali, trustees, and Messiah Vedra. As mentioned by Ms. Aguirre, we do have a health presentation for you today that includes a financial update in addition to employee utilization, employee participation. And that'll provide us an overview in terms of what we need to look at for the health plan associated with budget and also initiatives to enhance what we provide our employees. And so we have with us today for presentation Ms. Liz Bebo with Hub International, who will be providing some information on our health plan. And we also have Mr. Juan Chavez. He's our Director of Employee Benefits. And he'll be sharing information on all of the wonderful health initiatives and wellness programs that we provide to our employees, and also some new initiatives associated with some new apps available to our employees. And so I will go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Bebo.
Vidra, my name is Liz Bebo, and I am with Hub Consulting on your benefit plan. I also have my colleague Ty Penny in the audience as well. We will be presenting information about the health plan to help in your budget decisions. The first piece that I wanted to cover is really understanding the components of the health plan and the work that the team does to continue to be able to offer rich health plan benefits to your employees. Both the district and employees contribute to the costs of the health plan. When we think about the costs of the health plan, it really is the claims, so medical, pharmacy, behavioral health claims. You currently contract with Cigna as your third-party administrator. They manage both the claim payments and the network that is offered under the health plan. You purchase stop-loss insurance, which protects the district against catastrophic claims. And then finally, there is a robust wellness program which helps employees engage in their health and help them improve their health. As an overview... Just one, just working the technology here. Okay. As an overview to the health plan, since 2019, the district has maintained a self-funded health plan which offers employees and families rich benefits for health. In the last four years, there have been no changes to employee contributions. And also, the consumer-directed health plan is offered at $0 to promote affordability for employees to access healthcare. There's also a health savings account which goes along with the consumer-directed health plan to help employees manage their healthcare costs, and that has been incrementally increased by the district. The district also contributes a certain amount on a per-employee-per-month basis to the costs of the health plan. Those have incrementally increased. And then, as was discussed last month, there are various stakeholder meetings that are held so that there is a feedback loop on the health plan and whether it's meeting the needs of the employees. You also have onsite customer service. So if employees have questions about the health plan, both medical and pharmacy, there is onsite help available for that. And you also offer a wellness incentive. So if employees participate in certain activities around health, they are able to earn monetary awards. Looking at the cost of healthcare, we use a study from Seagull, which is a recognized health plan study. And the projection in that study was nationally, on average, medical costs would increase 6.8% in 2024 and 14.5% on pharmacy. In looking at the EPISD performance for the plan in 2024, the medical cost trend was 11.5%, and the pharmacy trend was 19.5%, so a little bit higher than the national averages. The contributions to that trend increase really fall into a few categories. The first is the cost of specialty medications, for the treatment of cancer, an increase in the number of people that are using non-specialty brand drugs for the treatment of diabetes, commonly referred to as GLP-1s. And then also increased utilization coming out of COVID for delayed treatments. We also see in the data more high-cost claimants and the expense of treating chronic disease. As mentioned prior, this slide depicts the employee contributions over time. And you can see that there have been no changes. Highlighted here are that the consumer-directed health plan, the employee-only contribution on that is $0 and has remained at $0. And then the traditional PPO plan, the contributions there are $33 on a monthly basis, again, to be able to provide affordable health access to the benefits of the plan. The considerations or the financial impacts that we see today are the continued pressure to health plan costs around the rising costs of medical and pharmacy. We do see that the health plan fund itself is experiencing a shortfall created when contributions don't cover the health plan costs, which has been a strategy of the district to keep those health plan costs affordable for employees. We also see that the health fund reserves are diminishing, which will continue to put pressure on your general fund budget. And then, in order to combat all of these forces, an employee contribution adjustment must be considered to keep the plan sustainable and the health plan benefits rich. After several meetings with staff over the past few months, the recommendation is to increase the district funding by $5 million and increase employee contributions by 15%. If these changes are adopted, looking at the 2026 expected health plan budget, this would forecast a slight surplus of $343,000. There's also been consideration for grandfathering enrollment into the traditional health plan and not having people be able to adopt that plan if they're not already enrolled in it. The next page...
Real quick, could I have Ms. Aguirre a couple of slides back? Could you be a little more specific on what the infusions from the district have been over the course of several years, given the fact that we're giving $5 million or proposed $5 million?
Yes, so on page eight of your booklets, you can see on the bottom right-hand corner that there have been significant infusions of general operating funds into the healthcare program. And the total there is approximately $26 million worth of general operating dollars that have infused into that healthcare program. You can see by year the amounts that we've allocated on top of the employer contribution that is approved at the initial, the first part of the year. that is approved at the initial, the first part of the year.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up to that? Sorry. I know that it jumps from '21 to '22 and then there's no '22 to '23, '23, '24. Is there a reason for that or did we just not have the numbers?
Well, the idea would be that the plan sustains itself. However, in those years, as we identified either savings within our operating or the need to infuse additional from fund balance, we came to the board for those allocations.
Okay.
So we did infuse in those years, they just may not have come from the general fund, correct?
It was the standard contributions that we did.
Are we pausing for questions or should we?
I just wanted to make sure that as we were talking about the new $5 million infusion that we took note of any previous infusions that we've made. Thank you.
I have several questions, but I'll hold till the end.
Okay. On page 11, here is just for the 2025 rates and contributions. And the health plan operates on a calendar year. So this is 2025 numbers here with the contributions and infusions from the budget. On page 12 here, just looking at enrollment in the plans, we can see by stakeholder, teachers, counselors, and nurses, the majority of the enrollment in the traditional health plan is in that category. And then on the auxiliary hourly folks tend to enroll in the consumer-directed health plan. Turning the page to 2026 rates and contributions, again, this assumes the recommendation of the $5 million increase and the employee increase of 15%. We have outlined on the far-right-hand side what the change in monthly contribution would be for employees on a monthly basis, as well as what the per-paycheck contribution increases were to be to the employees should this recommendation be adopted. On the next page, 14, the health plan, what we've done here is we've taken the health plan costs, which again run on a calendar year, and converted them to the fiscal year. And by doing that, with two assumptions of the contributions increasing for the district on July 1st and the employee contributions increasing on January 1st, the expectation would be that there would be a surplus to the Health Plan Fund of $3.9 million. When we think about the purpose of increasing employee contributions, again, the overall goal is to maintain the financial stability of the health plan and continue to offer rich benefits to your employees. We're also maintaining the cost share of these plans between the district and employees, protecting the health plan reserves from depletion and avoiding drastic benefit changes in years to come. Other strategies that are being considered by the team during these discussions are improving the pharmacy contract on unit cost and rebates, which will impact the budget, continuing to promote to employees the telehealth services and the onsite clinic that are available to them. Those are lower-cost visits, both to employees and the district, and continuing to promote engagement in wellness, which Mr. Chavez is going to cover.
Thank you. So does the board want to entertain questions before we move into the wellness?
Yes. Okay. I have a bunch of questions here. Let me start from the beginning. Let's go back to page seven. So you touched on a little bit about, you know, the rising pharmacy costs and, you know, the increased healthcare utilization post-COVID and so on and so forth. None of that explains why we're so over, you know, our national and regional cost trends, like for, like 6.8% versus 11.5% and then 14.5% versus 19.5%? Something's really, really off here. Like what's going on?
Thank you for the question. So the national averages, of course, are across the United States. So comparing the EPISD cost to there, it really is the disease burden of the population. So we do see a high prevalence of chronic disease and the treatment of those diseases. What we did see come through the data is the number of people that utilize those GLP-1 medications from '23 to '24. We also, there is, in 2023, the treatment of COVID-19, the PlaxoVid, that was covered by the federal government. In 2024, that was covered by the plan. That was an increase and part of the trend driver. And then the overall treatment of diseases like cancer, just the increase in the cost of the specialty medications used to treat those diseases.
So you're saying our pool of folks that take advantage of this healthcare gets more cancer than the national average and are on GLP-1s at a higher rate than the national average?
I don't know that I would make that statement, but what I would say is that yes, when I look at, when we look at 2023 costs versus 2024, those are the things that are driving the trend increases on the EPISD.
That doesn't make sense to me, but, you know, we'll have to dig into that a little bit more. So question on page eight. With these infusions that we've dumped into our healthcare over the years, you know, I can see in 2021 and 2022, why, you know, with COVID and what have you, why, you know, we'd need to dump in so much. Here's my question, though. Why were we so off in our projections last year? I mean, this year and next year, you know, to the tune of 4.2 million and then 5 million? Why are we not pricing this correctly?
If I may answer that response. So if you recall, the last four years, we have not increased premiums for our employees. And so over the last four years, we have, the district has taken, absorbed the increase to the costs. However, as medical claims have also increased, we've not been able to, you know, keep afloat with the increasing in medical costs and claims that the healthcare program has been experiencing. If you recall, we switched from the TRS Active Care, which is a state health program, to the self-funded program a few years back. And so it has and will take us some time to get to a strong, solid footing when it comes to our fund balance in the healthcare program.
So it's more so like just a lack of data, historical data, because we don't, we didn't have the data prior to when we switched over?
We didn't have the data when we switched over, but more importantly, we have not increased rates over the last four years. So that...
So it's somewhat intentional?
Correct.
Well, I would, in all transparency, in the last two years, because of the inability, you know, well, first of all, some lack of funding from the state, you know, in the legislative session, we didn't get an increase in the basic allotment. We were faced with not being able to provide any, you know, adequate compensation increases in this current fiscal year. If you recall, we gave no raises to teachers. And then the previous year, we were only able to provide a 2% increase. So on the flip side, we looked at healthcare benefits to, as much as possible, have employees not have to deal with inflationary costs in terms of their healthcare. So what that meant was, if we can't give you a raise, if we can only give you a 2% raise and we can't give you a raise, we're trying to maintain your take-home pay so that also doesn't become reduced. Because had we given the 2% raise and raised insurance premiums, it could have lowered, in most cases, take-home pay for teachers. And then yet, last year with no raise at all, it definitely would have, you know, reduced their take-home pay. And so, given those factors, we were able to go one more year. Going forward, you know, as you can see, the contributions for employees are somewhat manageable. However, they will see an increase in their, you know, in their premiums. Now, the funding outlook from the state, you know, may assist with, you know, some of the compensation, because every bill that's been presented requires a percentage of that money going towards compensation. But even so, and so, our long-term strategy would be that if we did this 15% push, then year over year, we would need to incrementally increase that so we're not faced with a huge jump, again, going forward.
We have to also add that the HSA program that we had had, it was also an incentive to help those employees that were fairly healthy and knew that they didn't need all that much insurance to be added. Adding into their HSA is significant. And with the, because there are not very many employers that can afford that. And that in itself should help those that maybe don't need all this insurance or are very young, healthy. They would really benefit from the HSA. And they may not see it now, but I was a recipient of that. And when I retired, that's what helped me get through the point. And to this day, I still don't have full insurance and I'm having to pay for it. But had I not had that HSA, I wouldn't have been able to even go to a doctor.
In our current plans, those who benefit from an HSA contribution from the school district are those that are on the high plan. Those that are on the traditional PPO do not receive that. And so that's why it was important for us to give you all a breakdown on, you know, the job roles and categories that are in those. And, you know, of course, we haven't, we would entertain as much feedback as possible from the board to determine whether we should move to grandfather that and really push people more to the high plan or maintain the current options, you know, that we have going forward. So...
Going back to the GLP-1s, are we utilizing the compounding pharmacies? Or are we getting them from the manufacturer?
The plans do not allow compounding medications.
Both plans?
Correct.
So it's our pharmacy benefit manager that doesn't allow for that?
It's the, well, it's a self-funded plan, so it's actually the district. But yes, we exclude compound medications from the plan.
Who, okay, that's really odd to me. Who made the rule that we can't go the compounding route?
It's, I don't, well, the district makes the decisions about the self-funded plan. Compounding medications are typically excluded because of the nature of those compounded medications and the costs of those medications. They may or may not be FDA-approved. So typically, plans do exclude compound medications.
So Mr. Colfer, to get into maybe more specifics, we could do some research through our TPA to identify the basis or the premise.
I mean, on the GLP-1s, it's probably, the whole compounding thing is probably ending, but they're like a third of the cost of what, and it's the same formula from the manufacturer. I think we could have saved millions had we been, you know, looking at that. I do have a couple more questions, but I'll hold off and give the other trustees a chance here.
Trustee Yanin, then trustee Hernandez?
Going back to the question on the health plan spend projections, do you all typically use national trends to predict the spends?
The trends are specific to your population, your demographics, and the cost of care in El Paso.
Okay. So it is a regional trend and it just appeared that we had some additional cost? Just, this is unrelated, but very related. Do you all know if there's a concerted effort by employers like EPISD to sort of challenge rising prescription costs, healthcare costs, just sort of from a federal policy or state policy standpoint? I see this as being an alarming issue in regard to how the government treats healthcare spending. And just by the nature of school districts oftentimes being some of the largest government employees in their municipalities, I wonder if that is something that anybody is working on collectively to sort of try and broach?
I think that the cost of care is something that is very complex. And there are a lot of organizations that do try and look at, how can we manage these costs more effectively? So not only the price, but are people using the care at the appropriate place, at the appropriate time, for the appropriate cost? So for example, on your health plan, you have transparency tools. So if somebody wants to, needs to have a knee surgery, they can use the transparency tools to understand what are those costs going to be? Where is the most cost-effective place for care? But yes, absolutely, I think there are several organizations that look at, how do you change the healthcare system to make it more affordable?
I think our approach basically, and obviously, there's a lot of significant room for improvement in that area, but is, you know, the preventative medicine or the preventative care that we want to educate employees on to reduce, you know, and preempt some of that. But if I understood your question correctly, do we actively challenge claims? I guess that would be a question for Ms. Cortez, but I assume that...
No, my question was more related to whether school districts, the size of EPISD, for example, as oftentimes the largest employers in their, you know, municipalities, are collaborating to help challenge what seems to be an increasing assault on basic social services. I just think it's good to sort of bring that up because I think there could be power in numbers if you have some of the largest employers getting together and sort of starting to, I think that's probably the only way you can maybe help stop this snowball effect. That was a question and also maybe something that we should have further conversation on. One quick thing that I do want to address, something that I've addressed in the past, probably my biggest concern year over year, is the push to the CDHP plan and how that affects employees and their families with regard to mental healthcare. I know, just kind of based on the research, anytime you push or have a CD, high, you know, probability of employees using CDHP plans, oftentimes they're less likely to use mental healthcare services or to seek mental healthcare because it's, you know, paid out of pocket and they're typically using those reserves for something they might deem more dire. Can you talk to me a little bit about what the online platform that's used with the current plan? that's used with the current plan for the CDHP plan? And can you also just talk to me a little bit about what mental healthcare services are offered or how they're covered through that plan?
So, mental health as a general rule is administered the same as any other illness under your plan. So there aren't different cost shares for mental health services. The reason why the district provides the health savings account, the deposit into those accounts, is to help with the first-dollar coverage nature of the consumer-directed health plans. Within your health plan, employees have the opportunity to use mysigna.com, which is a gateway into, there's various tools, various programs available for mental health, both on a online services. So there are various vendor providers that they have access through that tool, as well as telehealth through MD Live. They can access mental healthcare. And then also, there is a wide network of mental health providers that they have access through the health plan.
So what I'm hearing you say is it's basically an out-of-pocket cost if you're on the CDHP plan, depending on, right?
You'll have your cost share. Yes, exactly. So, for example, if you were to go to, for psychiatric care, you would have your normal cost share under the plan benefit.
So what is the cost share for those services with CDHP?
I believe on your CDH plan, it's 80, 80/20 after you meet your deductible.
And the deductible is what, sorry?
Yeah, so deductible is $3,300 for the CDHP plan, and that's also the out-of-pocket cost as well. So, just to go back a little bit, when an employee meets the deductible cost, they've also met the out-of-pocket cost. So it wouldn't necessarily be an 80/20 split. That would be for the traditional plan. But for the high deductible plan, once they meet it, they've met the out-of-pocket cost and it's covered at 100%.
Yeah, and that's my concern, is that so many people will not meet that cost and entertain mental health services before that cost is met. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can explore some type of coverage specifically for mental health services. I do think about the employees, but I really, really think about their children as well. I think it's just really critical to explore that because I think there is a dire need for mental health services for children, you know, and employees. I don't know if that can possibly be tackled on as a coverage issue. It would be maybe great for us to know how many, and I think I've asked this question before, how many employees and family members actually use mental healthcare coverage with the CDHP plan versus with the PPO plan? I think that might be helpful in just sort of navigating some of the question marks for me. I just hate to, I understand why we're pushing people towards CDHP because it's a cost savings, but I hate to omit from the conversation the importance of having robust mental healthcare coverage. So that would be, I guess, my ask is maybe to have, just to start with having the numbers so that we can have a comparison of who utilizes mental health care services with the PPO and with the CDHP, so that we can continue to have that conversation. But overall, I think employees are probably, have been, you know, very happy that the district has worked really hard to prevent costs from going up over the last four or five years. And again, just sharing my concerns about the direction that healthcare costs are, you know, the community is sort of taking on their backs. And so I think just also meaning to continue that conversation, but thank you.
Trustee Hernandez?
I have a couple questions on page 12, 13, and 14. I'll just start with 13, and then maybe it needs to flow back into 12. If you could just explain, or maybe start at 14, this page. I don't understand a lot of the acronyms on here. And so, I just don't know how this is all spelled out. And does it go back into 12 and 13?
Yes, thank you for the question. So on page 14, again, the health plan costs are derived on a calendar year, so January to December. However, your budget year is, starts in July. So what we are doing in, on page 14 in the exhibit is we're putting the costs on a per-employee-per-month basis so that we can take the calendar year costs and translate them into the fiscal year costs. So starting at the top...
So real quick, let me just, so PE, PM means per-employee-per-month, right? CY is?
Calendar year.
Calendar year. So I just, because she was asking specifically about the acronym, so I wanted to make sure that you pointed that out.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, calendar year 2025, so that would be your health plan year. And again, these are per-employee-per-month basis. So we're just simply taking the expected claim costs plus the administrative costs. So those are the fees that are paid for administration of your plans to get to a total six-month cost of $33.4 million. Then I'm taking...
Why the six months?
Because when you're translating from a calendar year basis to a fiscal year basis, I'm going to have six months of costs from July 1st of 2025 to December 31st of 2025. And then the health plan, then the calendar year 2026, health plan year, goes January 1, '26 through May 31st, '26. So that gives me a fiscal year, 12, or June, sorry. That gives me a fiscal year of 12 months of costs.
Because we're on a cycle where the new plan kicks in in January. That's the cycle that we're on. And our fiscal year runs from June or July 1 to July 1, right? So that's why it's in six months increments. Am I correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. Yes, thank you. So, all I, what I'm doing here is just taking estimated six-month costs from the 2025 health plan, six months of costs from the estimated 2026 health plan, adding those together to get to this, to get to the $68 million, plus an estimated of the health savings account reimbursement to get me to a total of $71 million. Then when I look at the contributions, I'm taking the funding costs from the district versus the contributions for the employees, gives me a total contribution cost of $74 million. So the $74 million less the $71 million gets me to the 3.3 potential surplus for the fiscal budget year. Does that make sense? Okay, good.
It does. And then, I guess, the page 13 was pretty explanatory, but I wanted somebody to break down page 12.
Patty, you want to work through that? Thank you.
Page 12, Ms. Hernandez, you were asking about the employee participation by tiers. So this illustration identifies by position, role, where our employees are electing to have coverage. If you look at your first section of teachers, counselors, and nurses, and what plan they are electing to participate in. So by the four different tiers, we have employee-only coverage, employee and children, employee spouse, and employee and family. And so this breaks down the participation in the consumer-driven high plan and the traditional PPO plan. So it identifies where employees are electing their coverage.
And Ms. Cortez, I understand that part, but what stood out to me, the CDBT, the consumer-driven health plan, is 1,190 versus what it would have been under the traditional of 1,067, right?
So what you have there is that 1,190 teachers, counselors, or nurses are electing the CDHP plan, and 1,067 are electing the PPO plan. And so you see there, the majority are in the CDHP plan, but it's a pretty fair balance there on where they're electing their coverage.
I guess what I was comparing, okay, the number of participants there versus over here on page 13.
So really what page 13 is showing you, that if we increase by 15% the employee contribution cost, this is what it's going to mean in each tier for PPO, those who elect the PPO, and then those who elect the CDHP. So you have it going across, so the employee-only, the 1,849 are enrolled in employee-only PPO. And it goes across the way to show you what their costs are going to be by month and per paycheck. And then your employee plus spouse, your employee plus children, and your employee plus family. And then the next section is the CDHP with the same information, 2,665. So I guess the question is, if we have 1,190 up here and 2,665 down here?
Yes. So, Ms. Hernandez, on page 13, that is your total participation from both plans and all tiers. So I think if you were trying to match those numbers, page 13 is your total employee count by your CDHP plan and your traditional plan. Page 12 is broken down by four category of employees.
Okay. I just need some time to absorb it all.
No worries.
Trustee Queer?
A few quick questions. Okay, so I'm going to go back from page 6, and then referencing back to 13. Okay, so on page 13, for the PPO and the consumer-driven health plan, and the one I'm primarily looking at is just the highest one. So employee plus family, right, for each one? So that difference in cost would be the 1,4850 for the PPO, and then 1,145 for the CDHP. So that's tacking on whatever the original amount was, which is listed on, I want to make sure the numbers are correct, page 8. So that was the 743 and the 990. So if this were adopted, these rates and contributions, the employee plus family on the PPO per paycheck, right, would be now at 113850? Is that correct?
Yes.
And for the CDHP, it would be 854? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, those numbers are fairly staggering. I mean, considering, considering that it is the employee plus family, right? So I mean, it's great that, you know, the healthcare is offered to the entire family plus our employees, but at 113850, I mean, that's, for some people, that amount of money is, I mean, that's a huge chunk, right, of their take-home. So going back to page 6, so we didn't really talk too, too much about that. The incremental increase to district contribution up to 511 per eligible employee, is that the same type of contribution that us as a district would be giving on top of the $1,000? Into the HSA, or is that a different type of contribution?
The 511 is in addition to the HSA $1,000, yes.
Okay, so technically, it could be 1511, 1,0051, or no? I just want to make sure I'm getting those numbers correct.
The $1,000 goes directly to the employee's HSA account?
And that's the HSA for the consumer-driven health plan, right?
That's correct.
The PPO doesn't have the HSA.
That's correct.
It's just your core plan almost, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the 511 per eligible employee, where is that money coming from?
That is the employer contribution, the district contribution, that goes into the health plan.
Okay. But where are we getting that money from? Like, where is that money coming from? From which...
General operating budget.
Okay. Is there any way, and I'm not, I'm just spitballing here, so I hope none of the other trustees get mad at me. I just want to know how we can lessen the amount that people are having to pay per month. And I get that we haven't increased our, any of our, you know, healthcare plans over the last four years. But to have a sudden 15% increase, I mean, that's fairly drastic. I could understand a 5%, a 7%, but to do 15%, a part of me wants to say, how much is Cigna taking home every month from EPISD in terms of what their profits are compared to what our membership is, considering it's a third-party-driven plan as to where we're now a self-funded plan, which basically means that we're just using them for paperwork. So is there a way to get those costs down?
That would require the district to contribute a higher percentage or a higher amount, above the $5 million.
But then that still puts us back at a shortfall, correct?
So if I can just add to that, is going back to the purpose of that, considering that employee increased contribution is, the goal is really to ensure that you have sustainability of the plan. And when you do have a self-funded plan, there does need to be a balance of the cost sharing in order to sustain that plan. And the beauty of it is, of having a plan, a self-funded plan, is that you are allowed to design it, you're allowed to adjust it and pivot as you need to. But you also have the responsibility to make those tough decisions to continue to sustain the plan. And I can tell you that if you, if we were not self-funded and we were under a traditional health plan, we probably would have seen significant increases throughout the last five years. So understanding that, yes, there is an impact to the employee, we also need to look at this from the long-term goal of continuing to provide those vigorous benefits that are currently in place. And, you know, as we mentioned, it is, it is an impact to the employee. But we need to consider what we've done with the plan in the last four years, which was very strategic to enhance the plan knowing that we re-initiated the self-funded plan in 2019. And so it takes work to continue to enhance the plan.
But if I could interject, I mean, I, you know, again, in full transparency, over the last two years, we took on a greater amount of the cost so that we could shield employees during, you know, those two years because we knew that compensation was going to be a significant issue in terms of the budget. And so, as a result of that, when we don't maintain a good balance of employee contribution versus district contribution, so we skewed it. I mean, you know, we need to be transparent. So that move, so we looked at 10%, we look at 15%, and really, we landed at 15% so that going forward, we could begin to get that balance back and, you know, and work through that. But good feedback for us to consider if there's any other opportunities. But right now, the recommendation is a $5 million infusion from us, right? In addition to the 511 that we already pay, right?
Okay, thank you all, appreciate it.
Really quick, Dr. Lovridge?
Quick question on the, thank you, quick question on the PPOs. I'm missing something. This, who's eligible for a PPO? Because if we're covering only the employees of the CDHP, that would be 2.6 roughly million, but it's 3.3 million? Who else is, am I leaving out here?
When we calculate the budget, we're using average enrollment. So we're using the average enrollment for a 12-month period to calculate that HSA fund contribution.
So the average enrollment would be 3,300 roughly?
So not all of our employees elect to be insured by the school district? Am I correct, Patty? What's the percentage?
That is correct. So we have approximately 3,800 employees enrolled in the CDHP plan and about 2,400 in the traditional PPO plan.
Right, but if we have 3,800 enrolled, why are we paying out only 3.3 million?
Because there is a small segment of... Because there is a small segment of the employees that are enrolled in the CDHP plan that cannot participate in HSA because they're either collecting Medicare or their TRICARE, there are certain contribution, there are certain populations that aren't allowed under IRS rules.
Okay, that makes sense. Now, going back to the consideration of stopping new enrollment in the PPO, if, just doing a little bit of math here, if hypothetically, we wouldn't do this, obviously, but hypothetically, if we were to shut down the PPO tomorrow and force everybody into the other plan, that would save, because that plan is, the CDHP is cheaper, that would save us, you know, just using napkin math here, that would save us about 2.5 million per year. Hence the consideration of stopping new enrollments in the PPOs, am I understanding this correctly?
Yeah, so the cost per member per month from a claim basis is more expensive in the traditional PPO plan. Shutting down the traditional PPO plan from new enrollments is a longer-term strategy. There wouldn't be an immediate impact to the budget per se.
Right. If you stretched out over 10 years.
Right, exactly.
Gotcha. Okay, my last question on this section is the improved pharmacy benefit management. Can you, I know what a pharmacy benefit management system is, can you just give a quick, you know, overview to make sure I'm not missing anything and then talk about, you know, what the consideration is on the table here?
Sure. So in the pharmacy benefit manager, so Cigna right now manages both your medical and your pharmacy plan. Part of your pharmacy contract is unit cost discounts and pharmacy rebates. So certain medications earn rebates, those are passed through 100% to EPISD. What we have done is we've asked Cigna if there would be an opportunity to improve the rebate payments and the discounts available on the unit cost. So what the staff has been talking with Cigna about is if we can make those improvements, then the district would adopt extensions to the current contract. There's also, so what that would do is it would increase the rebates that you earn on those, on that contract effective July 1st of 2025, which would then go directly into your budget.
How much would we have to extend the contract with Cigna and how much are we projecting that doing this would save us per year?
So the contract, so your contract with Cigna expires December of 2026. So there's two one-year extensions. And there's been discussions with Cigna, not only on the pharmacy rebates, but also increasing the administrative fee holidays. So the contract extensions are written such that if you extend for '27, you'll receive a $250,000 payment July 1st administrative credit, I shouldn't say payment, and then you would get an additional $500,000 to the $500,000 that's written into the 2026 for administrative fee holidays for a total of a million, and then $500,000 for 2027 and $250,000 for 2028. So the value of that is the 250 plus the 500 plus the 500 plus the 250, so a million over the period of that extension. On the pharmacy contract, it would be about a $500,000 improvement in the rebate payments, which would take effect July 1st. So those rebates would, the payment for that change in contract would be to the district at the end of September.
So I don't know, if we extend, just, you kind of lost me a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
If we extend through the end of 2027, overall, we'd save 1.5 million?
On administrative costs, 1.5 million, and then the rebate contract improvements would also impact about $500,000 in spend in 2026.
So 2 million total?
Mm-hmm.
To extend it by a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and we, we've, oh, sorry, I just wanted to add.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to ask, was it, to get that though, are there conditions for us?
So the way that the contract, and we've just received the contract, so it's not gone to your legal for review yet, but the way that the contract would be written is that the administrative fee holidays, if you were to terminate the contract early, those would be repaid by the district.
Seems like a win-win.
Definitely, I mean, I think so, but again, we have to go through the formal contract review with your legal team.
Because worst-case scenario, we pull out early and then we just give them back the savings.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Trustee Leveridge? Yes, go ahead, staying on page 16 if we could. Do we, do you all have a quantitative background of these, excuse me, breakup of all of these strategies? Is that possible?
Yes.
Yep.
To provide what each of these would, absolutely.
Correct, okay. And is that on the basis of experience here in the district or is that sort of?
That would be specific to the district.
Okay. And then going back to page 14, I'm curious to know regarding the surplus, is that, how far off is that from best practices and what does that look like with comparable-sized districts in Texas?
On page 14, the surplus?
Correct.
I think that, and I can only speak to the other districts which I serve, having a surplus is not, there aren't, the districts are experiencing the same shortfalls that you all are experiencing, so all of the districts are working towards making a shortfall of surplus available. I think that this would put you on par with your neighboring districts, in my opinion.
Regionally neighboring them, yeah. Or what do you mean? Size-wise or neighboring in what sense?
Neighboring in this community.
Regionally, okay. And that actually brings me back to the point that trustee Call raised, which I thought was really, really good point, because it's on page seven, our distance from the national averages on those numbers. Oh, hello. We, I think we really need to have a good explanation for that. I think if that is something that you're seeing in other districts that are regional, that are, if that's a comparative, you know, outlay that we can have, I would like to see what's going on in YISD, SISD, kind of theo, just to make sure that we're not onto some very, you know, big public health finding here. This is very, very important.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then I think overall, you know, we really need to be careful with this moving forward because what we've done is basically kicked the can down the road in successive years, and so now we have to catch up with this 15% increase. That is a bit concerning to me with regard to, you know, that having been compensation that's defrayed in a sense. So we haven't done step increases, we haven't raised pay for our employees. So this was the shining spot, so it was the positive note. So this is very concerning as to how it's going to be digested by EPISD employees, but I understand the situation, and so getting that parity and maintaining that parity over time is something that I think should be prioritized here. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
If I can just respond to that, Dr. Leveridge, I think when we say kick the can down the road, it was really more a strategic approach to initiating the self-funded plan and knowing that we were trying to address the lack of compensation or minimal increases that we've been able to provide. And so steadily, we approached it with some infusions to the plan, but knowing that we had to reach a point, last year, we actually did consider and approached a 10% increase, but given that we, to the employee contribution, but given that we did not, were not able to provide any raises, we opted for sustaining the plan. But really, it's knowing that there was a strategy behind the plan and what approach to take, where we eventually would have to find a better balance between the employer and employee contribution. Through the course of that, we've also, you know, again, the health savings account is a bit, has been definitely a benefit for employees and enhancing our employee wellness options for employees. So it's just really all part of the strategy behind what it takes to manage a self-funded plan, which gives us that flexibility. So thank you for that feedback.
Thank you, and I do understand that. It is a matter, though, of the strategy being known by administration, perhaps not being known by the employees themselves. So their greater awareness of what that outlook is going to be, I think, would be very helpful. And then on the health savings plan point, I'm just interested in what that looks like, usage numbers. So I know we've had a period in which we could have asked questions like this, but this is something that just comes to mind now, so I appreciate that information too. Thank you so much, Ms. Cortez.
I would just make a comment that in the spring of last year, we did share with employees what our options were and opting to keep their benefits steady. And I went to 60% of the faculty meetings, met with the teacher advisory council, and so it was something that they were well aware of. And I did share with them that eventually, healthcare costs were going to have to be addressed, right? But given the nature of, I think that it's, we would be remiss if we didn't also discuss the fact that perhaps the strategy would have been different if we would have received an increase in the basic allotment in the previous legislative year instead of having to wait now. So again, I think that there's a lot of factors, but absolutely, the feedback is important. You know, anytime you take, you know, you use a calculated strategy, there's typically, you know, some form of consequence that comes from that, so we appreciate that.
Trustee Nene?
Just a follow-up question regarding this short sort of shift to CDHP from PPO. I do think that there could be a concern, and I just want to make sure that as the train is on the tracks, the employees and the board has a good understanding of what that looks like as it's being forecasted, primarily in what best practices are, a little bit of the long-term implications, considering we are in a region that has a lot of chronic healthcare issues. I think we have one of the highest diabetes rates in the country. I do get concerned and I understand this shift towards something that saves the district a lot of money, however, I do want to make sure that we're balancing employees' healthcare needs in, here in El Paso with the cost savings. And it's hard to do that when we get a lot of information and just the budget cycle. I think something like that, that requires a lot of planning and is a long-term forecast and transition, is going to require a lot of background work, a lot of liaising with employees to see what services they utilize, enjoy, and most importantly, what the gaps are and how the district can help fill those gaps, especially because we are a self-funded plan. It seems that we do have a little bit of flexibility in maybe addressing some of those gaps, but I do want to just caution us to push the train all the way into full gear without really having that information of what it could cost. I mean, if you're a 33-year-old who has, you know, unexpected out-of-cancer, spending, you know, whatever the out-of-pocket costs are, spending your deductible and a high deductible plan, I mean, could be very, very costly, completely change your life, you know, every single year and how you can support your family. So I just want to make sure that we have that information sort of along the way and not just like right, you know, right here in the spring, because, and I understand it's a lot of information to collect, but it'd be great to know, like, is this a 10-year plan? This is how many people utilize it? This is the employees that have chronic conditions? This is how much they're spending? I think those spends end up falling on a family's overall cost burden, and I think that is, right, the meat and potatoes of it all is how much they actually spend out-of-pocket year over year, just period. And so just, if we could just sort of start forecasting that out, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a follow-up, and I may have missed it, but on the 13, page 13, on the second to the last item there, it says additional budgeted positions. Did we go into that or did I miss something there? And if you can explain, and maybe Ms. Ayvedra touched on it, on the funding rate, employer contribution and employee contribution of the 9, 10, and 15%, if they could just help me understand that part, as well as the additional budgeted positions. I don't know, did they touch on that? Did I miss something?
So the very last line on 13, yeah.
Sure. So on looking at page 13, if we just go down to the bottom, again, we're using average enrollment to determine the projected cost of the plan. So from the all plans line, we have a total of 6,200 enrolled. The cost of the plan for 2026 is forecasted to be 63.6 million. The way that that is forecasted to be funded is 55.7 million from the district and 7.8 million from the employees. So when I look at comparing to 2025 expected plan costs, it's an overall increase of 9% for the cost of the plan, and that is split between 10% increase from the district funding the $5 million and 15% increase from the employees, the $1 million. You're welcome.
For every 1% that we increase the healthcare cost on, if the district were to lower it and cover that delta, what would that 1% be? Do we know? So say we went from 15 to 14% in the hypothetical world, do we know what that 1% increase would be, cost us? Can we get that, just to kind of have that value behind it? The other question I have is on the PPO versus CDHP. How much does the PPO drive up our costs in the district percent-wise? Is it significantly higher? I know we keep saying higher, but we, do you guys have a number behind that or a percent?
So when we looked at the 2024 costs, on a, we looked on a per member per month basis, the CDHP plan costs $447 and the traditional PPO costs $574, again, on a per member per month basis.
So a difference of 120-plus?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then, as we talk through this, I just want to talk a little bit about EPISD plans. So what's the PPO deductible?
The PPO deductible is $1,000 and the max out-of-pocket is $5,000.
And when the $1,000 deductible is met, it goes down to an 80-20 split? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then for the CDHP, you said it was 3,200?
It's 3,300.
3,300 and the out-of-pocket, 3,300?
That is correct.
And then the difference is, it's covered 100%, correct? There's no split?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions? It's my understanding that Socorro is also grandfathering their plan or conversations to grandfather their PPO, is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. And I don't want to jump the gun, I know you were going to present here on the plan of the clinic and things like that, which is amazing, so I pass it forward to you, sir.
All right, good morning, Board President Erboli, Board members, and Superintendent Danisa Ayvedra. I'd like to first start and just let you know a couple of the topics that are going to be covered for the Healthy Living presentation. So I'm going to discuss our mission, our employee engagement, which I feel is one of the things that's really going to help the district, especially them becoming informed to what's available to them. I'm going to cover some of the future plans, we're looking to continue with this, as well as well. We're looking to continue with this, as well as a little briefly discuss some of the advantages that the clinics have been providing us. Right now, I have two two logos here displayed. One is our Healthy Living logo, that right there, and I'll go more in detail what it is, but that is what's driving a lot of our initiatives that we have, especially with our health prevention strategies, as well as our employee engagement. Another one is a new one, is is Walking Spree. As of right now, we have 629 members signed up. This has been available for our employees to use for at least a month. So in a month, we've increased the numbers to 629, and I'll talk more about those. But in this particular picture, what I do want to emphasize is that this is not just for our employees, but also community-driven. I do have a picture here of a service member that is there with their spouse, as well as and and one thing that I will say is, a lot of this is driven by our teachers, and I'll cover that a little bit more, but I do want to share who is participating and who is taking advantage of these programs. As we go through, you will see those pictures. So I'll first start with our vision on this, is to be a one-stop website. We talk about communication. We want to make it easy for our employees to be able to access and to see what's available to them, whether it's their wellness needs, their benefits that they have for the district, leaves, medical and healthy living classes that are available for them. And now, I I will reiterate, our mission is to educate, support, empower employees to improve and maintain their overall health and well-being through healthy lifestyle choices, and to create a culture of wellness by providing emotional, physical, and mental support. And what we mean by that, and this is what we're really pushing, is I believe a cultural change is a thing that will really help the district, and I think that's what we're pushing, to maintain a healthy lifestyle by providing not just the information, but the classes, as well as other initiatives that the district has, in order for us to change some of the behaviors we have here in the district. So employee engagement, like I said earlier, is very important. The levels of employee engagement, they benefit the district in a lot of ways, as they do other employers. The more the employees are engaged, the more they are supportive of their own careers, they're supportive of what's going on, and they feel they feel important, they feel they're part of the process. A couple of things that I wanted to share on this is when we started this initiative, it started in 2223. We had a total of 2,941 employees that participated. These are people that we captured in regards to who actually signed up and used. And it's not just the classes, that's including vaccines, that's including our health fairs that we have and other initiatives the district has. At this moment, in 2425, our participation is up to about 6,464 employees of the district that are participating in this. And like I said, it's not just the classes, but it's in many other initiatives that we're carrying on right now. Now, our focus is to increase the level of engagement of district employees, provide the mental health benefit, wellness, and activity information so that employees can take full advantage of what EPISD has to offer. What I mean by that is, a lot of these programs are already organic to EPISD. It's just making them aware on how they can use it and how they can benefit from it, and as well as show our community. We talked about our regional experience as opposed to other districts. I want to make sure that we show it to our community, show it to our employees, so hopefully to attract some other employees to come and work here at EPISD. The main thing that I want to point out is that our instructors are mostly our own teachers. It is driven, and it's been successful by our teachers, it's been successful by the employees working here at the district. They're the ones that people want to go to their classes. I'll use an example, I'll use our cooking class. Our buoy cooking class is is a very popular class. They really like going to that class, and normally I have people fighting tooth and nail to get into that class in particular, and that's because of the instructor that teaches it. Now, I'm going to talk about our future plans, is we do do surveys, we do ask for opinions of those employees, I'm sorry, those participants that are already participating in the program, determine, are we going to keep this class? Can we improve it? What other things do they want in the class, or what other classes can we provide? One of the things that was a suggestion that was provided, especially for our community, is what do we have for veteran support? As you know, El Paso has a large veteran community. I myself am a veteran of 21 years. That's something that we're looking to implement as well. Another thing is, this is something that we would like to do, we were already doing it to some extent, but I want to promote it even higher, which is our Breast Cancer Awareness Month of in October, go pink, as they say, for that particular month. So you're going to notice that we're going to be driving that quite a bit and make other people aware of it, as well as provide opportunities for our EPISD employees to get that mammogram exam. And I know a lot of people say, well, it's normally related to women going for mammogram exams, but men get breast cancer, too. So that's going to be made aware to them as well. Now, for February, we're going to go red in February, okay? Heart health awareness, that's where we're going to be going. We did it to some extent this year, but we're going to offer the ability for people to participate in events, and and we do offer raffles, we do offer promotions, as well as competitions amongst other sections with the district, in order to promote these events. And then we're going to continue supporting our instructors that are making this program a success. What I mean by that is our art teachers, our teachers who are providing assistance to our community need replenishment for their art supplies that they need. So we're certainly going to continue providing that. At this moment, we're not looking to expand that, but if needed, and we have more interest in it, we can certainly expand that. Now, I do want to have a quote here, and I'll let everybody read it. Like I said, everybody that's been here is our employees that have been participating on this, and this is in our pottery class that we have, and these are actually some of the things that they're making. Again, it's not just exercise, it's not just healthy living, but finding other ways to de-escalate that stress and provide mental health support to our employees. All right? So what I have here is our QR codes. If you go to these QR codes, they will get you one to our Walking Spree, the other one, it'll take you straight to our Healthy Living portal. When you go to that Healthy Living portal, you will be able to access our employee benefits portion, our leaves, our classes, our mental health resources that we have for our employees for them to use, whether it's our employee assistance program, as well as the telehealth links, and our onsite Cigna representatives that here that can provide assistance, as well as information on our clinics. Now, I'm going to expand a little bit on our clinics, is that no cost to employees. Premier Care Clinics is the ones providing our services to them. No cost services are available to our employees as long as they have an employee ID, and to family members who are covered under the healthcare plan. One of the things that we're going for is to increase the utilization rate of our clinics because that'll lower some of our medical costs, because they do, it is the acute care that they do offer assistance with. Now, with that acute care, it may save a visit to going to urgent care or going to the emergency room. Now, I do want to share that as of right now, for this particular school year, our participation rate, our our clinic utilization is just under 4,000 of our employees that I've been going to at any one point or another for assistance. Now, go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Bebo.
Can we ask some questions first on those things?
Yes.
Thank you. The employee clinics are look like an incredible service. Where are the three locations?
So there's three locations, the one that's here at Central, it's here on the first floor, the other one is on Paragon here on Mesa, and the other one is on George Dieter on the east side.
Okay.
And we do have those addresses listed on the on the on the wellness site.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing how those services are expanded. And do physical exam include sports, sports, physicals for?
That is offered at no cost as well.
And then just going back to the Heart Health Month and the, are you all currently offering or partnering to offer free mammograms? Has that been something that's been done in the last few years? I know that was a big thing when I was teaching in Isla, when we would have the mammogram van come to.
Yes. So we partner currently with radiology, professional radiology. We offer with Desert Imaging is another one, and right now, we're working on one, I don't have the name off the top of my head, but that is offered to employees.
So those are, those are, I think, great things. If we could see just how those are being scaled, you know, same for Heart Health Month, just screenings, I think, would be great as a service that's offered to employees, because screenings are something that people in general, I think culturally as well, just tend to neglect. So I would love to see what types of screenings and when, and ramping those up would, I think, be an excellent add to the slate of services, but thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Tanani, if I can add to that, we we actually do provide screenings during our annual health fairs, and the other benefit of that is, and we want to do more education, is there are incentives through Cigna, if you complete your screenings, then there are incentives ranging from $50, $100, $200, which could accumulate to a little over $1,000.
Excellent.
And that's just in participation and completing those screenings.
That's great. Thank you for that information.
I also want to point out, you know, the Walking Spree app, it syncs with your with your iPhone, if you have a watch or any other Fitbit or anything like that. And so it is, you know, it's it's a great little app, it tracks your steps, you know, so it really is encouraging our employees to exercise and the benefits of of all of those pieces. So we, I think I just joined it and a couple of other colleagues, and so we're comparing our steps on a regular basis, so.
And I know we need to move on to our next session, so the last thing I will add on the on the Walking Spree app is, we also have all of our Healthy Living options that are part of the app, where we can manage participation and hopefully enhance the app on what we provide as incentives for participating in our Healthy Living. And then we'll just have Ms. Bebo provide the last slide.
Really quick, Ms. Cortez, is the are the clinics available to both PPO and CDHP plan holders?
Yes, the clinics are actually available available to all eligible employees, which would include any employee who has waived healthcare coverage, they can still go to the clinic.
So any employee that actually waived and does not have healthcare?
Yes.
Can go to these things, no cost, still?
That's correct. And for family members, it's only for those that are participants of the health plan.
And there's no age restriction, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So in conclusion, what we had attempted to achieve today is just to reiterate to the board that the self-funded plan does require the proactive measures that we're taking today to continue to maintain rich benefits while also sustaining the health plan. Healthcare costs are rising, which necessitate necessitate contribution increases both on the district side and the employee side. The 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 staff has been committed to looking at these proposed increases as modestly as possible, but again, strategically, so that in future years, there are not drastic increases or change to the health plan budget. And in summary, the recommendation is to approve the 5 million increase in funding on the district side and the 15% increase on the employee contribution side. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. This will be item B, fiscal year 2026 budget development update.
As we move on into the budget development update, your packet, your booklet starts with a slide that's providing you some general assumptions on the snapshots that you'll be seeing in the subsequent pages. When we're looking at our revenue, we are projecting the current law, basic allotment amount of 6,160, as we know. The legislature is still trying to master and define what the the law will, the state funding appropriations will look like as they conclude the session. So it is, we are taking or approaching this with a basic allotment and not us making assumptions that may not come to fruition in in the upcoming months. When we look at the ADA, the snapshots that you're going to see today are with the 87.5 ADA projection. If you recall from the April 1st presentation, we were using that 90% ADA, and as as we shared through the forecast of completing this fiscal year, we are anticipating that our ADA will not reach that 90% level. And then we are considering additional revenue through the ADSE program, which is additional days in the school year, and we can generate approximately $2 million with the additional days that we have incorporated into our calendar. When we're looking at expenses, I think it's also important to say, we have talked about our healthcare program and the need to infuse $5 million. The snapshot you are going to see does not include that yet. Employee compensation is not included there, capital replacement plans and any additional budget assumptions. As the legislative session continues to move through, there will be some laws that enact additional funding for special state programs, such as the bilingual potentially, safety allotment, and the state compensatory allotment. And so we are not considering those allocations in the snapshot you'll be seeing. So this, just to, okay, sorry, it went backward. There we go. This slide here presented, and it's your page, page 29, is is the snapshot that I presented on April 1st, that's the one on the left-hand side, and then the snapshot on the right is current, the current status as as is right now. When we look at the April 1st snapshot, I'll remind you that we did anticipate a $20.5 million decrease in revenue, as we anticipated with a decrease of enrollment, and at that time, we were still working through some of the data on our student groups that generates additional revenue. You recall, we talked about the bilingual and the economically disadvantaged, where returning with less, lower money or lower revenue. You saw the campus allocations and the personnel department allocations that generated a $17.1 million shortfall of revenue compared to our expenses as we were projecting at the time. When we look at the the snapshot on the right of the slide, that is the current year, and you can see when I point, I look at the revenue, the $509 million compared to the $506 million, we decreased in revenue because we are using an 87.5 ADA snapshot, so it's more conservative, but we're aligning it to what we have seen in the last couple of years. Our bilingual, the good news was our bilingual and our economically disadvantaged populations through the PMS reporting and and the on-point data we received look better now. So we do see a decrease of $3 million more in revenue there. When we look at the campuses, personnel, and operating, that there have been no changes. We've allocated, as you can see, this is considering the six anticipated school closures. And then when we look at departments, you can see there that we have reduced our personnel costs at the department level by $1.3 million compared to two weeks ago, or April 1st. Through these last couple of weeks, we've done a lot of work to evaluate our our current vacancies within our department-level positions and identified opportunities to close some of those FTEs. We're still doing some work and anticipate potentially additional savings there. When we look at operating, we've also had the department hearings, and each area or division has had to evaluate and identify efficiencies. So you can see there that we have reduced our operating costs at the department level by $1.8 million, so almost the 1.9. When we look at our revenue, anticipated revenue and our expenses that are proposed at this point, we're anticipating a $17 million shortfall at this point as well.
I want to point out some major differences between the graph or the table on the right versus the table on the left. The table on the right, again, was used 90% ADA, the one, the other one is 87.5. Also, reiterating what Ms. Aguita shared, it's important to understand that the P or the on-point data for student coding, as it relates to compensatory education and bilingual, increased that, as well as ADSE, the additional school year, and so we generate additional money because you all adopt a calendar that gets us to 180 days of instruction rather than the traditional 177 or 175 for most districts. So that, we generate revenue for going those additional days. And so all of that is reflected using the 87.5, and so so there is a reduction in the in the shortfall by just a little bit, right?
That's correct.
But knowing that, we've also reduced the ADA by 1.5% or 2.5%, right?
2.5%.
Ms. Aguirre, you said the budget hearings were completed. Does that mean that we don't anticipate any additional cuts to the operating?
On the operating side, we do not anticipate at this point. I mean, we're still evaluating all aspects of our operations. But it's also important to know that as we continue to move forward and strive to provide better programming for our students, we do, we are required to make investments in the allocations at the centralized level that provide the programming that our students receive at the campuses.
But we did receive a lot of feedback from the board in the last budget workshop about, you know, trying to keep as much of the cost savings away from the classroom as possible. So in the last few weeks, Ms. Aguirre and I have met with each division. We've gone line by line through each one of their department budgets. We've worked with them to prioritize the must-haves versus the like-to-haves or nice-to-haves. And then we've also gone back with the help of Ms. Cortez. And we've looked at all of the existing central office positions that are a part of our budgeted, current budgeted allocations. And any positions that were vacant and have been open for a significant amount of time, we went through each one of them and we closed them. And so that's where you get the $1.3 million worth of additional savings. Because even when they're vacant, they cost the district money because there's budget allocated for those positions should they be hired. And so we've eliminated a significant number of, I think, in this first round, it was 20, 25?
Between 20 to 25 positions.
Right. And we're still going back to look at some of those positions that have been open, you know, for some time. Because if we've operated this long with, without many of them, then in all likelihood, we may be able to continue to operate without.
Yes.
Ms. Aguirre, or Ms. Ayvedra, I should ask, before Friday's deadline, which trustees, Friday is the deadline to get your considerations to the district staff about the budget recommendations, can we see over the last, I mean, three, four years, what percent decrease we've experienced from the departments? I mean, we've done cuts every year, correct? Can we look at what that decrease has been from '21 to today, year over year? As well as can we look at central office positions and personnel and see what we had in '21 to today as well? And then I think the other thing that would be good to know is how much does central office account for our personnel account for our overall budget? I know that there's been a lot of conversations about central offices is kind of where that fat is. And I kind of, if that's something that we need to address, which I know you already looked into it, it'd be good information for this board to have.
Okay. So this slide, which we're now on page 30, what you can see is that this is our current snapshot. It's exactly what you saw on the previous slide on the right-hand side. This is our snapshot with the assumptions of six less campuses on our operating budget for next year. So the shortfall there would be $17 million with current law. When we look at this snapshot, this snapshot is the exact same expenditures. However, it's without the school closures. And the biggest difference that you can see there would be under campus personnel, the amount of change in personnel costs from 326 million for this in the first, on the left side, and 341, which would include the six campus personnel logs that we would carry with those six positions, six campuses, I apologize. So when you look at that, our shortfall of revenue would be 31.6 million as opposed to the 17.1 that we're proposing. This $31 million worth of deficit shortfall would be 21, the equivalent of 21 days of fund balance, with the assumption that $1.5 million per day is what we utilize as a district currently. So now this one's bringing in a little bit of the conversations that we've had with the legislative session and the things that are being discussed in Austin. So this snapshot, again, you can see that our operating expenses are all the same. The difference is in the revenue sections of the box. So you can see that instead of the anticipated 506 million that I reflected in the snapshot before, with the increase to the basic allotment of $220 from 6160 to 6380, we would generate about $519 million in revenue. This would be a $10 million reduction from what we were, are currently anticipated with current law. So when you look at that, you also will notice that there is a gray box towards the bottom that's titled mandated compensation allocation of 40%. So this allocation and this proposal is considering the fact that the law will have some language stating that 40% of new money will have to be allocated to compensation, employee compensation. So of the new money, 5.5 would be required to be strictly for compensation increases. So with that consideration on top of the expenses we proposed, we would see an $8.7 million deficit. So it would be reduced from the 17 million to the 8.7. Again, we don't have compensation, I'm sorry, healthcare costs already incorporated into this snapshot. If we were to consider reopening the schools with the same law that is currently proposed at the 220 level, the deficit would go from 8 million to $23 million. The other conversation that's out there, and I think is the one that the latest version that we heard as of Thursday is kind of holding its ground, is increasing our basic allotment from 6160 to 6555. So this would generate, actually kind of make us whole when we're looking at our revenue. Our current revenue is 529 million. And with that assumption of that increase in basic allotment, we would pretty much be at the same level of revenue for the next coming year. If you, if I, if you look at the gray box between, at the bottom, between the total and the revenue over/under expenses, the 40% requirement for compensation would be 9.3 at this level of basic allotment. And if we were to carry, so our deficit would be now 2.9 million, which is definitely more digestible for our district. However, if we were not to close, or if we were to reopen schools, then the deficit would be $17.6 million. So that is the difference between, or the advantages that we have as we have looked to right-size our school district and ensure that our buildings are at capacity rather than half-empty buildings.
Ms. Aguirre, the healthcare considerations that we just heard would increase that deficit by 5 million, correct?
That is correct. So our deficit would be closer to 8 million by infusing the 5 million. And then at the, the $17 million deficit with all six schools reopened would be an additional $23 million of a shortfall. And I just have that little arrow that reminds us of that requirement with compensation. So I know that we've also talked as...
Sorry, can you repeat that one more time with the consideration of the $5 million? This does, or does not include that?
So the snapshot, the expenses don't include it right now. So that would increase our shortfall.
So add $5 million to any one of the totals that we just showed you, either with the 6380 or the 6555, you would just add 5 million to each one of those totals.
But this does assume the 15% increase for healthcare costs?
Yes. So as Ms. Ayvedra mentioned earlier, so we have been doing a lot of review of our centralized allocations, this personnel as well as operating costs. And I wanted to share this slide with you. You do have an extra handout in your booklet that looks like this. And this is, these are printouts from the presentations that our external auditors provided back in November. And the reason, we do have our dollar expenditure by, for every dollar in the district. But if we focus on this page, I just wanted to share some of the variances that you're seeing on the slide that's in your booklet. So what you see, first of all, before I go to the variances, is that we've provided you with our regional school districts, their current administrative cost ratio. So the second column in the graph, in the table, it shows you what the state requires for districts based on size. So in our case, El Paso ISD, the state requires us to be at 8.55% administrative cost ratio or below. That would be the highest recommended level that they would allow. And it's important to note that the state reviews our admin cost ratio for the first reports that you all see. And it's basically a reporting to identify the efficiencies that the district operates with when it comes to the revenue we receive. So you can see that the smaller the district, that admin cost ratio is, gets higher on that blue column. You can see that El Paso, Socorro, and Isleta, we are all at that same expected 8.55 percentage. Then we did give you some historical information of what that rate has been for EPISD over the last couple of years. So we've been hovering anywhere between 5.34 in 2019 to 5.39 in 2023. And then you've got the graph where you can see how EPISD, the darker blue line, has pretty much been consistent over the last couple of years. The teal, I think it's teal-green, aqua, I'm sorry, aqua-blue is Socorro ISD, and the red line would be Isleta ISD. Now, I didn't include the data on 2024 on that table because we have not received the state's final administrative cost ratio. What occurs and why I brought this document forward to you all is that the auditors do a general calculation dividing administrative costs under functions for '21 and '41 against instructional functions, which is instruction, direct instruction, professional development, media and library services, as well as counseling. So when they do that, they divide those two, those two groups of costs. That is what results in our admin cost ratio. In fiscal year '24, the auditors in November reported that our percentage would be at 6%. However, the state has not released what our actual fiscal year '24 rates will be until August, and you'll see that in the fall. What I wanted to share is that the calculation, once the state gets it, is significantly lower than what the auditors project. And so you can see that, like in '23, where we were anticipating, based on the audit, that it would be 6.12. In '23, the state gave us a 5.39% admin cost ratio. And so you, I just wanted to compare. In 2020, the state identified us at 5.41, and we were at 5.48. In 2021, the state identified us at 5.87, and we were at 5.5. In '22, the state identified us at 5.45, and the report was at 5.96. So again, the auditors' projections are significantly higher than what the state gives us. So then this graph is going to share with you a little bit of the discussion when we talk about the legislative bills that are out there for funding and the requirements that include compensation for employees. On the top table, you're going to see what that 40% level of new money would be required from our district based on the proposed increase. So you can see that the first, the 220 proposed increase would move our basic allotment to 6,380. That would mean $13.8 million of new revenue for the district. So 40% of the 13.8 would be the 5.5 million. If the basic allotment increased to 395, then the new money that the district would realize would be 23.4 million, which would require us to use 40% of that is 9.3 million. Now, if we bring down to the bottom table, when looking at the, another part of the conversation is of the 40% of new money, 75% of that money needs to be allocated for teachers, counselors, librarians, and nurses. So of the, and I'm just going to focus on the 6555, the very last line item, because that's really the one that's right now in conversation. 75% of that requirement would require us to allocate $7 million of the new money for that group that we just specified, teachers, counselors, librarians, and nurses. So when we look at our compensation, as we start developing our compensation, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, the legislature gives us a little more direction. Because if they don't finalize the bill, it's very difficult for us to identify what that proposal would look like. But when we look at the next slide, just keep in mind that that's that specific group of individuals that the legislature is focusing on, we would be required as a district to spend $7 million of compensation in that group. So what you see here is our compensation considerations. On the left side, you see by funding source and then by employee groups, what it would cost 1%, a 1.5% and a 2% pay increase. I did shade in gray. You can see teacher, nurse, librarian, and counselor because those are the, those populations that the legislature is identifying for additional funding. So when you look at this, under the General Operating Fund, the 1% pay increase from midpoint would be 3.5 million. 1.5% would be 5.3 million. And a 2% from midpoint would be 7.1 million. And then you've got your food and nutrition and then other funds in total. In looking at what would that starting pay be for a teacher at a 1% pay increase, the teacher would go up to a $58,000 starting salary. And at a 2% pay increase, that would be $58,800. If you can see the bottom box on the slide, that is our current regional starting pay for teachers throughout the district, the region. You can list from highest to lowest, and you've got Socorro, Isleta, Anthony, Canutillo, Clint, Sanelli, and El Paso. You can see there that we are obviously at the bottom of the pay when it looks at starting pay for our teachers. And however, that is, it's also important to note that our conservative approach to the pay increases has also allowed us to sustain and remain fiscally strong when it comes to our budgets overall. On the top right-hand side of the slide, you can see the one-time payment scenarios. So these are, if we were to give a $500 stipend, a $750 or a $1,000 one-time payment. And you can see the costs of those as well. At this point, we're not presenting any official proposal of a compensation model. Just wanting to share what the costs would be requiring of us if we were to give a, consider, as we consider any pay increase.
We're looking closely at the language in the bill to determine whether we can use a one-time payment strategy to supplement, you know, the full 40%. But that may not be the case. So if it's not, then we would bring back a model that would increase the percentages. Because again, when we increase the percentage, that means that that's a long-term sustainability percentage that we would have to bear going forward, right?
Yes. The last slide that I have is our remaining board workshops that are scheduled. So we've got May 6th, June 3rd, and then with a proposed budget adoption on June 18th. And we, we have to also be cognizant of the fact that if the legislature goes into an extended session, we may not have an actual law or guidance on how we're going to propose. So in essence, we will build a budget with the most conservative and the, at the basic allotment of 6160. And then as, when it finally closes, then we will bring forward an amendment based on whatever the final determinations are of the bill.
I would share that, just tracking kind of the conversations in Austin, I do believe that there's a commitment to fund education. Although I would share that the increase... Although I would share that the increase would need to be more significant for us to really realize the benefit. But I do believe that there's a commitment to, for the money to flow to school districts where that wasn't the case, you know, in the previous session. We also know that, as, as voiced by one of our community members, that the voucher bill is alive and well. And so, you know, we're watching closely to see what the final outcome is. As I shared previously, we've got more information from the House bill, less information from the Senate bill, and then there's a lot of negotiation that has to happen between the two chambers before we get a final funding bill to us. But our hope is that prior to the end of the session, we'll, we'll get some more definitive information.
Just to go back to Ms. Sagita's timeline, if you look at this, the date's not there. But on this Friday is the deadline to submit your recommendations to the superintendent's office. So that is the twenty-fifth, I close the business. Are there any questions? Dr. Lovidge?
Thank you, Ms. Sagita. Question regarding page thirty, general operating snapshots. So I, I understand we're doing this comparison regarding with school closures and also without school closures, closure of six campuses, correct? That's the assumption?
That is correct.
And then, so the only different items here would be personnel. So one hundred percent of the savings from the closures is in personnel. There's no effect upon operating between closures versus no closures.
So.
How, how is that, how, how's that happen?
Well, if you, taking us back a couple of months back to the DDR, when we looked at the, the estimates of the budgetary impact of the closures of six schools, and I'm, I'm referencing this presentation that was part of the last report on DDR, we, I broke down the, the savings based on personnel costs, operating and maintenance costs. But we also kept in mind that the maintenance, there are maintenance costs as long as the buildings are up, upright, right? We need, and then they're in our district possession. So we do have to have some allocations related to that. Now, you also won't see as much of the say, when you say that there's no other change, it's also important to note that we, as we budget for next year, there are some considerations for additional costs for different operating requests that were made by each department. So I, I, I think that when you look at the largest impact that you can see there, although it's not the only impact, is that the personnel, the positions that have already been removed because the employees have been placed into existing vacant positions in other campuses is already present. The operations side, we're still maintaining that reserve to ensure that we have operating costs for the maintenance of those buildings. They have to be operational as far as utilities, security cameras, things of those nature, that nature that we still need to account, account for when we look at those empty campuses.
So is it safe to say that it's not reflected in there? Because it's a, it's a minimal, the operational savings is minimal compared to the, the position savings that you get.
Because there are other savings, yeah. There, there's, there's other expenses that are, we are accounting for within those costs.
But these figures are to the dollar, so it's identical to the dollar from one year to the, from one scenario to the other scenario. So there's absolutely no effect, you know, a campus that has a bunch of kids in it, presumably there would be more maintenance costs, more fixes necessary. So I'm just, that's, that's what's, and we discussed this back in November, that's what kind of confused me on that.
There may be savings to the closures of the campuses, but the operating budget that was proposed by each department also has new, new costs or considerations that may, that offset some of that savings. So that's why you're not seeing.
They get to the doc, like to the dollar. So everything but personnel is to the dollar, and that's what I think is, just a better accounting would be helpful in the long run. So I, that's really the only thing I'd, I'd raise other than, you know, the administrative cost ratio. I, I do think we need a broader sample, because we're, we are looking at Socorro and Isleta and a number of districts that have other profound financial problems. So if it helps us to aim above that standard, I think we should shoot for that rather than say, well, we're good with the state. So therefore, these are just extraordinary times, and so if we're going to be saving, we need to save on all fronts.
So you're, you're, you'd like to see other school districts that are.
Yeah, if that's possible. Yeah, across Texas and just what national averages would look like, since we are facing these kinds of challenges. I think they're acute here, so yeah.
I would, I would share, Martha, that if you look at the school districts, they're comparable to our size.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons why we gave you the state cap, because we're well below the state cap, so that, that's one comparison. Even if we didn't show you the comparisons of the, of the school districts, the state caps you at eight point five five percent. And so we're significantly below that. But we could certainly go back and look at that information for other urban school districts that are about the same size as we are.
Any other questions? Trustee Hernandez?
In regards to slide thirty, the fund balance to the right was twenty-one days. What's the fund balance with the seventeen million?
So the seventeen million.
About ten days of that we have to use.
Every day is, I think, one point five, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're looking at eleven point something.
It's about half. It would be, you know, about half of what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know if this is the time to say it, but I'm going to say it. I don't understand why we would want to, you know, I'm coming at this race in good faith. But why would we want to open up schools again? We're in the negative. Why would we want to do that? I need to know.
I would share that we're just presenting information, you know, our job as the administration is to provide the board with all information so that when we do present the board a budget, they have information to make a well-informed decision. So it was important for us to share with you, with all of the board, what the budget outlook would mean with the decision that was made in November, and what that would mean without that decision. And so our goal as administrative team is just to share the information with the board so that the board understands, you know, where, what the bottom line may look like with or without that.
And I understand that. However, just looking at, at our numbers, I'm a numbers person. I do not understand why we would want to open up schools again and rescind what we've already voted on. And that's what I want to say, and I'm, and if you all would like some more information, I'll give you more. But I'm, I'm with the, the reasoning that numbers talk, and these numbers show us that there's no way I would go for that, and you should just know right now, I'm not.
Any other questions or comments?
I have.
Trustee Hanani?
Back to page thirty. When we're looking at the personnel savings, it's a, the variance, it's a fourteen point five million or so.
That's correct.
School closures versus not. Can you kind of walk us through how that could be if we filled all positions this year?
So the two hundred and seventy-nine positions are no longer going to be carried over to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So that means that those two seventy-nine give you a cost savings of the amount that's reflected there. So when Ms. Cortez says that those positions have been placed, they have been a, a position that is vacant and is anticipated to be vacant for next year, they've already, they already have received their, their new placement.
Right.
And so those vacancies are current vacancies and, and, and would be vacancies for next school year based on the staffing that we've projected for next year.
Right, but, and that's my question, and that leads me to the, the question, is how many FTE positions, how many FTE positions were vacant last year? How many were funded last year? And funded last year? I mean, I think that is the, that's the question that I'm asking, is how many were vacant last year?
So we would have to bring that to you probably in a board update to identify total empty positions at the campus level.
So if there were two hundred and seventy-nine positions that were filled through vacancies, that means there were two hundred and seventy-nine vacancies last year? How were, were the, and.
That there's probably more. Our attrition rate is about ten percent each year.
That's correct.
So we carry anywhere from, we start the school year on, you know, or start hiring for the next school year, anywhere between five to seven hundred vacancies per year.
Right, so we were, if they were vacant last year, we didn't fund them?
We do fund them. We have to allocate.
We budgeted for them.
Yes.
Right, and that's, that's the, the budget versus what was actually, the, the budget versus actual.
Correct.
Right, so what was actually funded last year? So that means there's the, there's the gap in what was actually funded because there was two hundred and seventy-nine vacancies. Assuming those two hundred and seventy-nine vacancies carried over to this year and were not funded, just like they were not funded last year, what would be the cost savings?
In addition, they're, they're funded for the school year, so if they be, they start the school year as a vacancy, there's also the potential that they get filled during the course of the year.
Correct, but let's, let's take the assumption that two hundred and seventy-nine positions were vacant last year and were not funded. Let's carry over the same assumption that two hundred and seventy-nine positions are vacant this year and not funded. What is the, what is the cost savings at that point?
But you, when you say not funded, then we, that wouldn't be a vacancy, so maybe you do clarify the question.
So I think that the question is that, so when we have a vacancy, it is set aside in the budget and it's baked into the budget numbers, right? That's an assumption that we take forward, that it's a vacancy and that position is going to be filled. What Ms. Hanani is asking is if we carry that over as a budget assumption, and that position is never filled, that, that's, that's the, the, the window that we're looking for in terms of how that impacts any form of cost savings.
So you would have to look at the different groups within those two hundred and seventy-nine employees to determine what would be the general savings. So if we assume that a sixty-five thousand dollar salary, an average cost, which that's what we average when we look at funding a, a teacher position, that, when you multiply two seventy-nine times at sixty-five thousand, that's about eighteen million dollars. Now, you also have to keep in mind that not everybody there is at that level. So you've got a lot of support, auxiliary, and clerical support that are at lower, lower pay. So that eighteen million, the, it, it would be a variance anywhere between sixteen to eighteen million dollars potentially if you look at each pay group within that two hundred and seventy-nine example that you're referring to.
Maybe a better question is how much money did the district save last year by not funding those vacancies?
So we did fund them. We saved at the end of the year.
Right.
Any funds that are not expended through a budget allocation, they generally become savings that are now reported in fund balance.
So what was that amount last year?
Well, our fund balance presented last, by the, our auditors in November was eighty-one days.
What was the amount of?
I, we would have to break down to answer your question.
But do you, do you understand, do you understand what, what I'm saying in terms of if those, like, first of all, those FTE positions that were budgeted for and were not filled last year? How, those services, what were those services? What was the average salary that was spent last year on FTEs? Were they, were they filled with temporary labor? Did we have more substitutes? Was that, was that, was that intentional? Was, I mean, there's so many questions when it's just this blanket amount, that's like, well, we're saving so much money, but actually all the positions were filled because, I mean, that's, it's hard for me to, to wrap my head around that number, because that's not typically the way it's presented.
So we prepare with an assumption that every employee, that every FTE that is identified as a existing FTE, we need to allocate dollars for. So you're using the two seventy-nine as an example, however, we don't, that is, that could or could not be the number of vacant positions that we ended last year with. This year, as we looked at the examples and the savings that we were going to project on the closure of those six schools, was based on the FTE count that was at those six campuses.
Yeah, so it's all hypothetical that those positions could have been filled, but the reality was that they were budgeted, but they were not actually filled last year. So we, we actually spent X number of dollars, and we're actually spending approximately X number of dollars based on what's budgeted this year.
So those six campuses were operational with the majority of those employee, of those PCNs filled. I think we can do an analysis of this year, how many vacant positions of those six campuses were actually vacant. However, they were operational with teachers, campus, clerical administrators, because they were operational. But just like any other campus that has vacancies, we support through substitutes or, or temporary, which also consumes budget.
Right.
It's also an expense.
It would be really good to have that breakdown, because it does appear that a lot of those vacancies may have been filled with temporary positions. How many of those, what was the case, were some just unfilled? What type, I mean, we do get a lot of feedback that there's a lot of substitutes that are taking out positions for teachers. I mean, you know, there's a lot of question marks there, but I guess my question, and to answer the question, how much was actually spent on personnel last year versus what is budgeted for personnel this year? And I think that is the, that is the best way to generate the actual cost savings of a school closure plan, because it's, it's definitely not being, like, when you look at what was actually spent last year, and then it'd be great to have sort of an asterisk with whatever was temporary, you know, labor or cheaper labor, that is helpful to know when you do a side-by-side comparison. Because doing a budget to budget in this case, when you had so many vacancies, it's not an actual budgetary expense from last year, it's a carryover. And so that is the biggest question I have, is what was actually spent on personnel last year versus what is budgeted this year?
So our current budget for personnel is four hundred and fifty-three million dollars, for four hundred and fifty-three point eight million dollars. If you look at the presentation on the left side, that snapshot on the left side, and you look at fiscal year twenty-five, when you add the campus personnel and department personnel, that's all-inclusive of what is funded with local budget as far as personnel costs. Now, we also have food and nutrition and other grants, that we also have allocations for personnel as well.
So that was the, that was the actual.
That's what's budgeted for.
What was the actual, it, what was the actual that was, ended up being spent?
Okay, so that.
Minus the vacancies. Because budget, for me, budget doesn't, when you're talking about what was actually spent, you take away the vacancies. I understand we're budgeting, but what was actually spent minus the vacancies? And then compare that to what is being budgeted this year.
So I would have to provide that for fiscal year twenty-four, as we haven't finished this fiscal year, so I could not give you an, an amount for this year.
Do you know what it was for twenty-four?
I'm going to have to do, pull that data.
So I think. I think there's also a distinction between a vacancy and removing a position completely from the budget landscape.
Yes, and to that point, Ms. Ever, that what I was going to add is the other important factor or variable here is that what is brought to you for an improved budget on the personnel portion is staffing assessment. So any position specifically, especially to campuses, is based on a staffing need assessment. And so therefore, those, if we call them, if you want to call them vacancies, but those are positions that were identified as a need based on enrollment at each campus. And so those positions are in the, in, in the budget because they are identified as a need. Now, if they remain vacant through the year, there's still that recruitment effort all year long, right? So it's not a vacancy that's out there as just an unknown position. It's accounted for based on that staffing assessment that took place to identify the need.
Yeah.
So as we go through the six closures, what we've been able to do is identify that now you can consolidate some classes and therefore do not need the same, that your staffing need has changed, and therefore you need less FTEs in your budget allocation.
No, and that, I mean, I, I, I understand that, you're eliminate, you're, and you're eliminating position from the books. I mean, that's totally understandable. The, the, the point remains that you took all of the personnel from the displacements, and you moved them into vacant positions, which means there were X number of vacant positions available within the system. So there's question marks there. How were those vacant positions filled in the previous year? Were they filled with cheap labor? And the other question, and there, like, you could do the inverse too, which is, which is to say, let's assume that you didn't have a school closure plan and carried over X number of vacancies. Let's say you had two hundred and seventy vacancies and, and carried over a budget. over a budget, eliminating two hundred and seventy vacancies or utilizing short, cheaper labor for those two hundred and seventy vacancies, what, what is that amount? I mean, you could do the inverse too, right?
So the other variables are your natural attrition, which, and, and, and through that natural attrition, we are able to identify placements for our surplus teachers when we go through that staffing assessment. And when it comes to, I mean, I wouldn't call it cheap labor, really what we do is if there is a long-term substitute that is based on a plan, for example, it could be a situation where certification is pending testing, and so it's a very intentional process for identifying a long-term substitute. If there is not a plan for it, then it is an ongoing recruitment effort to attempt to hire for that position.
It's just really hard to make all of that out with this, because it's, it's just like, oh, we're saving X number if you didn't close the schools, and if you do close the schools, and the reality is a lot more nuanced. And I think it's really important to present that accurately, because the bottom line is we had all of those vacancies last year that were budgeted for, that were not paid for, and then, you know, so if you were to carry over the vacancies, the numbers would be a lot different.
I think, one more thing if I can...
But I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share that we're misusing the word vacancy here. The personnel positions, so when you think about position management, you've eliminated two hundred and seventy-nine positions from the personnel budget. You've eliminated the positions in position management. They no longer exist. They're gone. That doesn't, that's not the same as an existing vacancy that still remains as part of the position management books. There's a, there's a significant difference between a position that's eliminated and an existing vacancy.
I think to add to that is we're also using the word vacancy, I guess, very loosely because vacancies are ongoing. It, it, it is not a stagnant vacancy that's there all year. It's the constant moving, the constant attrition. So that vacancy number, it changes based on the continuous attrition and the continuous filling of positions. So really, it, it is more a strategic approach to how to fill positions that we currently identify as a need. It, it is not as just a straight, we have two hundred and seventy-nine vacancies and we just found a place.
And, and again, it's a lot more of a nuanced picture. And typically with school closures, you see, you start to see savings over time because you have eliminated those positions, and naturally by attrition, you will start losing, you know, there was, those, those employees will start falling off generally. That is an accurate, to me, is kind of the preliminary conversations we've always had about school closures, that has always been the narrative. It just seems that the narrative has shifted quite significantly where it's a lot more black and white and the, and the bottom line is actually a lot grayer. So I, I wanted that distinction, and, and I do, I really do want to know. My question is, how many FTE positions were vacant last year versus this year percentage-wise?
Assume versus actual, right.
Assume versus actual, yes. And then also the average salary per FTE. And it would also be nice to know, those vacancies last year, were they filled with temporary positions? And, and what did that look like? Because that also gives us, I think, a better picture of, of where we are in terms of the need, you know, current vacancies and the need to fill our high in-demand positions, whether that's speech-language pathologists or bilingual certified teachers. I think it's really good to have an accurate or, or more comprehensive picture, I should say. So if you could, if I could get that information, that'd be great. And then the last question I have is on the administrative cost ratio, what percentage of that is a central office cost?
So if we go back to, if you, if you look at the dollar that's on the back page of that handout, this is the breakdown of every dollar in our general operating budget. So when you look at instruction, direct instruction, the total of sixty cents is, goes to direct instruction. That's literally in the classroom, teachers, supplies, everything that's there. And then when you look to, and it's sixty-two cents, I, I'm sorry, I can't see. When you look at the campus administration, that's everybody in the, in, within the office of every campus, it's eight cents of every dollar. Student support, that's your extracurricular, your nurses, your counseling, transportation, food and nutrition, those are all, I always consider that part of that direct instruction support for students, and that's twelve cents. So seventy-four cents of every dollar is directly going to the campus support. When you look at central office, three cents of every dollar is for central office personnel and, and operations. And then facility, security and data processing, fifteen cents of every dollar goes to those areas.
Thank you. I, I neglected to turn this page over. So can you explain the discrepancy between, like, here it has campus admin and central admin, you add that up and that's eleven percent? Can you just explain the discrepancy between the five point nine percent that's on slide thirty-two and the eleven percent that's shown on the dollar bill?
I'm sorry, what, where, so campus...
So if you look at the blue section down there, it tells you what functions are included in that, in that cost. So her question is, you've got this separated by campus admin and central office, and what function codes do those represent versus the function codes here?
So campus admin is not considered in the administrative cost ratio. The function twenty-one and forty-one is referencing instructional leadership at central office, like your academic side of the house, and function forty-one is your operational, your business services side of the house. Under, when they divide those expenses with functions eleven, which is again direct instruction in the classroom, function twelve is allocations for media and library services supports, which again is library services in essence. Function thirteen is professional development. So this is the professional development our teachers, our instructional staff receives. It's not a professional development for administrators or clerical. It's direct instruction for, or development of our teachers. And function thirty-one is counseling services. So this gives you, one, the admin cost ratio, and this is giving you the cost per group of every penny of every dollar.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, thank you for that. I'm gonna echo some of what Dr. Leverage asked for in terms of just best practices that are not necessarily state best practices, but possibly best practices nationwide. You see in a lot of states that are high-performing states, there is a, you know, sort of a more concerted attempt to increase the amount that's allotted towards instruction and instructional support. So I think it would, it would just be great to see what that looks like, especially as we're facing, you know, as we say, declining population, and as we expect our district to shrink, I think it'd be good to get ahead of that by trying to allocate as much as possible towards instruction instead of following with dwindling admin to lead with that, I think.
So I, we can look at in-state, because we have, you know, that's the information that we're gonna have our hands on. It would be helpful to the administration if there was some suggested states in particular that you would like us to look at, in particular, any specific, you know, because I, I, I don't follow national as much as I follow state, and, and I, I know that each state calculates and funds in a different way. So those nuances, you know, would, would impact that as well. So if there, if there are some particular areas of the, of the country that you would like, like us to look at, that, that would be helpful.
I mean, my, my idea would probably be the highest performing states for education would be a good place to start. I mean, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I, I think Massachusetts is probably the highest performing state, but there's probably a list of, you know, top five or whatever sufficient in terms of just, just generally knowing what's working for high-performing school districts out, not just in Texas, but outside of Texas, and probably the top five or ten states would be a good place to start.
We can initiate that research. I'm not sure that I can have that by the next board meeting, board workshop, and the important thing to keep in mind is the way that Texas codes our expenses may not be very different to how other states do their coding, their funding, their allocations. And so it might take us some time to do a lot of that research to be able to bring forward a, an actual comparable that's apples to...
Fair enough, no, fair enough. And that's, I, I, you know, I don't want to suggest that I'm expecting that, you know, something like this tomorrow, but I think it is good to sort of have that understanding as we're having conversations about dwindling school enrollment, so that we're, like I say, ahead of it, not behind it. But thank you.
Ms. Aguirre, in, in addition to Ms. Hanani's request, I'd like to see, I know, like, stepping stones is a contract that we had to pursue because we had a shortage of personnel and vacancies, and now that we are filling all these vacancies, it would stand to reason that we would eliminate these contracts. So as we look at the savings, can you please add in the contracts, which I've known we've done across the board? You know, the utilization of substitutes, I think is another good thing that we really have to look at, what that cost over year is going to be now that we are limiting the positions. Because I just don't think it's fair to look at vacancies versus vacancies year over year. You have to look at the contracts that are ancillary to what are services that we are providing. And then in addition, what are the support mechanisms that are needed? I know, you know, going from seventy-four campuses to sixty-eight campuses, that's gonna eliminate a lot of, you know, other services. I know that we're maximizing, min-maxing our transportation, so what are those things? So I think while it's easy to kind of get to the vacancies versus vacancies, we really have to dive in deep onto what those contracts were, because we had significant contracts to fill the void of services. Is that correct?
Yes, I would share with you that as we've gone through the budgets with each division, there are some significant reductions. I'll give you one example, and Mr. Garcia can probably expound, expand on that. But we are moving away from ST Math, which was, you know, close to, what was it, Al? Million-dollar contract, close to a million-dollar contract?
Six hundred and sixty thousand.
Six hundred and sixty thousand, and we're moving to IXL. That's in direct conversations with teachers and what they prefer to use, and the fact that the state provides that at a minimal cost. So those are the, the measures that we're taking as well, so that, I just want the board to know that we're taking a very comprehensive look at, you know, everything. Again, what are the must-haves versus the nice-to-have or like-to-haves that sometimes exist during healthy fiscal cycles? But we're certainly not in that situation at this point. And again, our, our goal is not to debilitate, debilitate, you know, the classroom experience. It is to maintain that level and actually continue to work to enhance the educational experience. And so I, I, I just want the board to know that we're working very vigilantly to secure any cost-saving measures that really don't support our vision and where we're going and the experience that we want for our kids, so.
And, and Ms. Cortez, if you can expand on this. My understanding is we've eliminated the positions from the six campuses and we've transitioned to vacant openings. We're seeing a loss of a thousand-plus students. I think we saw eleven hundred this year, correct? So that stands to reason that we would need less personnel as we staff these campuses. So whereas normally we would have a teacher maybe teaching a classroom of ten, which is a reality that we saw at some of our campuses, we would just basically eliminate that vacancy moving forward, correct? And ensure that we're optimizing our classrooms at a much more efficient rate?
That is correct.
So I think that that's the other thing that we have to take in consideration of. That gives us the availability of eliminating even positions that go past that two-hundred-plus positions, and that that would no longer need to be utilized because we are trying to be more optimal. And then as we look at those, again, extracurricular services that we utilize our teachers and professionals for, you know, this board likes to talk about the quality of life of our teachers and kind of that, that, you know, making, we can, may not be able to pay you more, we can increase your work or decrease your workload and accountability. Let's look at our, you know, our music teachers, our art teachers and all of those folks that were traveling, you know, to six, four or five campuses, and now they get one taken away, and, and look at what that means for them as well, I think was, is part of that greater story. I did want to ask you, Ms. Aguirre, if we spent the twenty-one days from fund balance here, that would put us at what amount on our fund balance?
So based on the projection that we gave on April first on how we're gonna end up this fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, we're projecting our fund balance to be at seventy-two, seventy-point-two days. So if we consider the reduction of twenty-one days by, based on the slide that's presented, that would put us down into the fifty, fifty days or so, which would be not aligned with what the state recommendation is and our GFOA recommendations.
Okay, and then Ms. Everdah, do I have some questions on facilities? Do you want me to field them to you, to Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Pearson, I would...
Mr. Pearson, can you come on up, please?
I recall that, that recommended fund balance from the state, wasn't it at sixty-five days? Sixty? Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Pearson. As we look at the six school closures and, and moving it up to eight, the eight schools next year, of those eight campuses, I believe all of them were, were swamp coolers, correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the average cost of upgrading a swamp cooler to a centralized air? Rough estimate, I mean, we just did that round with SRF funding?
Yes, sir. So it's, it's based on the square footage of the facility, so each one is a little different, but an average, aggregate cost estimate is about ten million dollars per campus.
So with those eight campuses, we're looking at eighty million dollars right there? Is that correct? If we, I mean, because I know as we go into bond conversations, the one promise the community has been, we're gonna upgrade every campus to centralized air, is that correct?
That's correct, but I want to make sure that we're clear on this. That's just the cost of refrigerated air. That doesn't cause any MVP upgrades that will be required to control the air conditioning systems.
Can you elaborate more on what that means and what costs associated with that?
So a lot of our systems are dated based on the age of the school, and so our circuits can't hold a refrigerated air unit, and so we'd have to upgrade our panels, electrical panels, to be able to support a refrigerated air unit.
Would there, would there be any other repair costs, like the, because I, I know here in El Paso, the air conditioning units are on top of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
So there would be an, an additional cost for possible roof replacement before we could even address the HVAC system?
That's correct. As a part of our HVAC replacement, we have to look at a roofing envelope. A lot of time, based on the age of our roof, we have to do the roof replacement first before we do the rooftop unit installation, which would be an additional cost as well. And roughly for an elementary campus, roof replacement is about three million dollars.
In addition to that, a, as we look at transportation, first I want to focus on, you've eliminated some of the routes, you, you've decreased the number of routes, is that correct? Or is, you to explain to me the, the net gain or net loss on routes?
Yes, sir. We've decreased the number of buses that are on the road, and we've expanded our coverage.
Are we using the same number of buses? How many, are we decreasing? Sorry, I, I, how many?
So when we originally talked about a DDR consolidation, we presented two hundred and forty routes, which was our worst-case scenario. And as of right now, once we're through with all of our route consolidations and our rerouting measures, we're down, I think, about ten buses to be exact. So we'll be, ten buses from what we currently have on the road, I'm sorry, not the two forty. So based on what was presented, we're down about forty buses off the road.
When you look at the safety requirements that HB3 presented to us to include panic buttons, security vestibules, film-resistant glass, other, other measures like that, having an armed police officer, someone on that campus, my understanding is none of the eight campuses that were including the school closures met those measures of, of what requirements HB3 put. Let's just use the smallest campus that you can think of, EPIC, what would the cost of those security measures be?
Could you repeat that question?
For security vestibule, panic room, technology, all the upgrades that we have to do per HB3 from last legislative cycle, what is the average upgrade cost per campus?
I'm gonna volley to Mr. Viduso, to Mr. Chief, to help me with that, but if, I believe our vestibules are about two hundred and fifty thousand. If you can include our silent panic technology, I believe it's about another two hundred and fifty thousand or so, to be about a half a million dollars per campus.
But also the safety film per campus in elementary school is about eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so for a total of the eight campuses, we're looking at four million dollars if it's half a million dollars per campus?
Roughly, yes, sir.
Okay, and then, I know we don't have a preventive maintenance schedule, I do, but when we look at these buildings that are, are, I mean, I think all the buildings that were closed are critical or poor, the lives, I guess, what are the things that you think would need immediate replacement as you look at our district as a whole of our older buildings? I know that we've talked about roofing is, is definitely one, HVAC maintenance is another one, so we have those covered. Are there anything other critical things that we would need to address?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So from a holistic standpoint, our deferred maintenance bill, and I talk district-wide because I, I know that very fresh, because we're going through it now, is about four billion dollars. Obviously, to make any correction to a particular campus, it's gonna start with the HVAC, it's gonna start with the safety requirements, it's gonna start with converting our technology on campus from... on campus from analog to digital, and so there's, plumbing and electrical, all of that have to be replaced as well. The average age of our facility is about sixty years old, and so as you guys know, technology changes about every three years, and Mr. Vidusco can share with you that we're going right now from Cat Four cabling to about Cat Seven cabling, which comes at about a cost of about, roughly, what, Mr. Vidusco, about two million per campus?
Yes.
Roughly two million per campus. So I think I answered your question there, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, no, no, that's perfect. I, I think this is part of that greater conversation. When we look at the eight campuses, school closures, we really have to look at what the, the ancillary costs are going to be, what the direct indirect costs are going to be. And what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Pearson, is that we're saving over an easy hundred million dollars over the next several years in not having to provide the upgrades that we normally would should the campus be occupied. That doesn't even consider, I think, a lot of the other things in the classrooms and things of that nature. When we go from an occupied building to a vacant building, what are the differences do we have to do? I know we have to provide electricity and utilities still.
Yes, sir.
Insurance, and then there's one more. Is it security?
Security.
How does the security work for these campuses? Obviously, we don't staff somebody there all full-time. Is the El Paso ISD Police Department kind of just on the lookout and take calls for that area?
So we staff this technology as well as rotations from the police department within itself. But to answer your question originally, the, the maintenance and operation cost per an occupied building is about four hundred thousand dollars. Taking that building off the books, we reduce that cost to about forty thousand dollars, which, what, about what we average annually to take care of surplus property.
Okay, so that's three hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings, roughly times the eight.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, that, that's good news. I, I think as we look at the conversation, and I appreciate Ms. Ivedra, y'all, providing the without school closures and with school closures as the rhetoric out that I'm hearing in the community is, the plan is to, to readdress and potentially reopen schools is, it's not necessarily the short-term gain, we have to look at the long-term gain. And as we look at any potential bond that may be coming forward, I think that's, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that would go towards the bond to upgrade these campuses when they have a utilization of thirty-eight percent, thirty-two percent across the board, I think is probably the average. So as we get that information about, I think, what's that personnel cost as trustee Hanani looked at, I think number one is contracts, and I'm going to use stepping stones as a good example again, stepping stones was utilized to offset the vacancies that we had for SLPs. And so if we are now filled with SLPs or closer, what's that contract going to be decreased to? Because that is a direct cost savings that we're going to realize from that. The other thing I'd like to know is, as we go through the attrition that we, at the end of the year, we're going to experience, is there a plan as we right-size, are we going to right-size before we offer the positions and just before we fill them, we're going to reevaluate? And if so, what are we anticipating the number of vacancies to be cut? Because when you go from seven thousand to seventy-five hundred, and then we're losing another thousand kids or eleven hundred kids, I anticipate that's going to be much lower. And then if we can just track the vacancy percentage year over year, I think would be extremely helpful. And then the last thing I would request is if we can come some, some way, somehow, kind of put a fiscal note of what it would be to still have an operational building versus a vacant building, I think that that's significant because my basic understanding is there is a much higher standard if it's being occupied by children and employees versus if it's a vacant one that needs to be boarded up, a chain-link fence around. Energy costs obviously drop significantly because although you have to have the service to the building, you do not need to turn on the electricity every day, so that's going to be a, a savings there as well. And then the insurance, does it drop at all, the rate from when it's vacant or occupied?
I have not seen, we're currently looking at evaluating next year's premiums, so we're looking at the approach to what is being covered as we look at a vacant building, but I, I can do some of that, provide that information at a future.
I appreciate, and I just, really at the end of the day, it's the district community committed to doing people first, students, people, professionals, our community members, everyone. And so as we look and have this conversation, it's definitely a lot more nuanced than, than it comes across as being black and white. And so as we can look at the holistic cost of what that's going to do to a community member, to the taxpayer, to our students, to our teachers, I think we really have to have that conversation. And then as we look at our fund balance dropping to forty-nine days on without school closures and sixty-two, sixty days on the with-school closures, what's the way that we replenish fund balance dollars?
So the replenishment of fund balance are pretty much one-time opportunities. As we look at our properties and, and sell properties, that, that's an infusion. The other infusion is based on actual expenditures. So if we start freezing expenditures early spring, we can generate some savings. However, when there is a budget that's developed with a program that encompasses twelve months, that definitely puts a challenge on our departments and our campuses when we freeze dollars and sweep them to increase our fund balance. So it's, it's not a, those are the, probably the only two opportunities we have to realize increases to our fund balance.
Mr. Pearson, how many active properties do we have on the surplus rolls right now?
Active we have on surplus, when you say active, you mean?
No, we, we could accept a bid for sale tomorrow.
I believe we have sixteen.
Sixteen remaining?
And I think four of the sixteen are residential homes.
Okay.
Residential, like custodial homes or condo cottages, those type of things.
And then how many have we sold in the last three years?
I believe with Mitzi Bond at number seventeen now.
Seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know if we have this, I doubt we do. We don't, we don't have appraisals on our properties until they go to surplus, correct? Or do we appraise, appraisals?
Yes, sir, we have appraisals.
On all vacant, existing vacant ones?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do we have it on the six closures of this year and the two potential, or closures next year?
No, sir, those are occupied buildings, so we don't.
So that would only happen when the surplus happened?
Yes, sir.
Can, can we see what the aggregate amount would be from the remaining sixteen properties that could potentially be an influx of cash to the district? One-time influx?
Just based on the appraisal.
What I'm trying to see is if we go down to forty-nine days with the plan of potentially reopening schools, with the one-time infusion of selling every single property that we have in our district, what would that get us back up to?
Yes, sir.
That, I think that that's highly valuable, and then we obviously would not know that for the six schools or the two.
And we can get that information for you, President, but I want to acknowledge that that number is very fluid. Obviously, if we sell to a private developer, that number can go up. If we sell to government entities, that number is, is probably as-is on the appraisal value because we can't go.
Absolutely.
I think that there's just, what would be the minimum, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and again, with no guarantee that you could offload all sixteen, right?
Yes, ma'am. We can definitely get that number.
Okay, and if we can, yeah, when there are board updates, fine with me, I don't, I mean, that's also confidential information, so I completely understand that. And then on the administrative cost piece, I'd actually just, if possible, Ms. Ivedra, I'd like to set up a meeting with, with the team to kind of understand better what the state's ratio is and, and better understand, because if we're five-point-three-nine, we're significantly lower than all these other districts, so I'd like to understand why and what and all the, all the details there. And I, like I said, as I said earlier, I think for some right reasons, Central Office has been stigmatized as we have a lot of fat there and we have a lot of excess personnel. I think when we see these numbers, it kind of tells a different story, so I'd like to understand it a little bit better to make sure that, as we say people first, that means all people, not just people in the classrooms. And that's all I have.
I have something.
Yeah, trustee Cor.
That last conversation, I'm extremely disheartened about. We went through the entire process of DDR back in October. We've, I think, people have gone through the wringer, back and forth with all of the trustees here. The media has been covering all of this, and now we get a ten-second snapshot of, well, what if we could have sold our properties so that we didn't have to close down those eight schools? To say that I am upset, disenfranchised, disheartened, is probably the most understated comment that I could make in the last two years that I've been on this board. If we are sitting on hundreds of millions of dollars in surplus property, and now the question comes up after there's already been a four-three split on a board where the tie-breaking vote was a vote that I don't think should have been cast, and I'll bring that up again, that would have failed for three-three. Now it's a four-three vote, now we have six schools that are slated for closure and two more that are slated for next year's closure. To come up and state that Mr. Pearson's now put on the spot, this was abundantly clear that all this was already pre-planned because it was basically a talking points of three million dollars per roof, which, Mr. Pearson, I can ask you the question, it costs three million dollars to maybe re-roof an entire school, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Roughly.
But, okay, but if we're going to put a new HVAC system, doesn't necessarily mandate that we do the entire roof, right?
Depending on the age of the roof.
Sure, okay.
Correct.
If, if it needs to be re-roof for safety purposes?
That's correct.
It needs to get re-roofed.
That's correct.
If it doesn't, then it could be retrofitted for that specific area.
That's correct.
So that would be a huge cost savings.
That's correct.
Okay. The ten million dollars, I don't doubt that HVAC systems are extremely expensive, considering all the maintenance that has to go into it and then all the electrical upgrades as well. So that, I, I mean, I don't know without me doing more research if that number's, you know, on par, but, I mean, you're our subject matter expert for this, so I have to, you know, default to you.
And actually, that number's very conservative.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. But i- in terms of now us getting to the talk of, you know, putting forth our fund balance there, we've essentially decided, and I'll say we, not me, nor representatives Lovridge or Hanani, but the other four trustees on this board have decided through a vote, which is our democratic process, that we're going to close down all those schools and basically take out that influx of, of community. And for that statement to have just been made by our board president, that what if we could have, you know, just put back that money back, I, I'm extremely upset, that's all. Thank you.
I think you misheard me. It was not that we would just have sold the schools to keep the schools, or sold those properties to keep the schools open, it's about maintaining a healthy fund balance because the standard practice is sixty days in Texas, and so at some point we'd have to recoup those costs. In addition, when we sold Texas Tech, that wasn't, I believe it was a nine-million-dollar something, ten, we actually used that money for one-time payouts for our employees. And so my point was not that this would have been in, in lieu of, it's that how do we, if we absorb such a massive deficit, how do we recover our fund balance should something ever occur at any point? Because those opportunities are few and far between of what can and cannot happen. So I apologize if I misspoke, but it was never about we would sell properties in, in lieu of keeping schools open or how, you know, anything of that nature. It was truly about how do you recoup your fund balance cost if we were to expend thirty, thirty-two million dollars next year?
I think that's what it comes down to, isn't it? I mean, one-point-five million per day, we can recoup that pretty, pretty quickly with selling some of our surplus properties, considering what we've been selling them at, depending upon what the property is. But in terms of being more aggressive there, had we been more aggressive, and I know that, you know, the past is the past, votes have been cast, but if we had been more aggressive with surplus properties, then a lot of that money could have gone into the fund balance, in which case we would have had an even healthier fund balance that would have, that would have necessitated or allowed us to keep some of those campuses open.
So of the four properties of the sixteen, those are residential, those sold for like twenty thousand dollars at one point, if I'm not mistaken, when we did a big bulk of it earlier, a couple of years before you were on the board. And then Mitzi Bond's going to be another example I'd give you of eight-hundred thousand dollars is what we sold it for. That's nowhere near one-point-five, and so I think we have to look at the size of the properties, where the properties are at. Fannin's also that list, which is in my district, I'm very familiar with that one. It's a very small tract, it's in a residential, it's not potentially even zoned for commercial, and so I think we can make the assumption day in and day out that, yeah, we can get three million dollars per property, but that's not realistic at this point. So already I'm taking five off of that, which would be nominal in, a cost, and so that now brings you to eleven, which would never recoup thirty million dollars, it's very unlikely. The largest property that we've sold in my time as a trustee is going to be that vacant property in the northeast land to Texas Tech. That's the largest amount that we've ever gotten. We have, I believe, one other tract like that, but that is zoned for, I think, or it's for anticipated development for the district or need for the district. Is, is that correct, Mr. Pearson?
Yes, sir, it's undeveloped tract in the northeast, I believe it's forty-five acres.
Yeah, that's the only other one that we have. So again, I, I restate my point, which is I don't think the reality is that if we sell that, and I want to verify that because I know that we had the discussions more ethically, you know, then if we have appraisal for all of them, I'd like to see how we get back to that, that actual set sixty days plus of fund balance, because the other things that we have is we have the Bliss upgrade coming through, which we agreed to pay through fund balance, which is a partnership with the federal government. And then if we ever do any one-time increases, that's going to come from our fund balance. When we have to look at our buildings and do one-time repair costs or something else, that's going to come from our one-time fund balance. And so I'll be very, very frank and clear on this, it's just not, ooh, now let's look at this because we could have not, you know, school closure's a mistake. What I'm saying is we have a, hopefully another hundred-and-forty-year history with EPIC to gain to, how do we get to that point today by making those decisions?
And if I may add, trustee Cor, it took us three years, as far as I remember, to sell those sixteen properties, and we inherited it. We, this is a new board from where we were in the past, and we're having to set the conditions to be successful. And this is where I think we've already voted and we're going to move forward. But if you all have something else in mind, I, I wasn't privy to any of this until today.
And, and, and I would just say, you know, thank you for the transparency, I get it, but in terms of, I think, how all of that discussion was just framed within the last ten minutes, unless I completely caught it differently, I think other members of the public were, if they're listening in or other people here, it just kind of seemed like it was, well, we did this, but now we have all these other surplus properties that could have gone towards this. And I understand the fund balance, and I completely agree with President Naravalli that, you know, we've been a operating district for a hundred-and-forty years, we're the oldest district in El Paso, we're probably one of the oldest ones in the region, right? We're a strong district, we're a great district. I would love to have an influx of students, right? I think all of us would, but in the sense of trying to do the right thing, it just seemed a little counterproductive to bring up that discussion now, but those are just my, my personal observations.
Yeah, thank you for that.
To clarify one point, though, I don't know that there's this comparison between no action and action, and that this action that happened was the only action that could have happened. I think what we were arguing for back then, I mean, we're here now, we're, we're rehashing, was a different kind of plan, a better plan that focused a little bit more on process, that focused on disparities across the district. I, I think it's tremendously disingenuous to say that it's about no closures versus closures we realized, and I did very, I, we talked about it many, many times, that some closures needed to happen, probably nearly as many as we did experience. So the rhetoric that's out in the community that we're going to not close any schools, that there's that, that's even a possibility, is, I don't think that's false. And so it's, it's here now, we're talking about it, so I figure it's probably a good thing to raise. That was never something that I was arguing for, that was never something that our minority was arguing for, it was something that we recognized we needed to do because it's the financially prudent thing to do for our district. It was the pattern at which it was going to be unfolding that we had concerns about. That's, that's the major point that I'd just like to make, because it's brought up, because this was the discussion that was had. So all due respect, just to clarify.
Yeah, no, and I agree. I mean, I'm very happy with the district's DDR process because it was data-driven, and there were, there were opportunities for this board to start hashing out and trying to make deals and trying to set up meetings to not close certain schools instead of doing that move. And I think that this board kept our, we listened to the data, we listened to the information, and we didn't play that. And I think that that's something that we hear from the 2016 closure, was that it became very board-driven and political, which schools are you going to be willing to close down? Which schools are you going to be closing down? And that kind of was the board discussion, and this one was really data-driven, and we saw the information in the backup. And when the Xs and Os didn't make sense, the superintendent and staff went to the drawing board, made the recommendation, and changed it. And so I, you know, I think that that's something that I definitely agree with you. I think it was the process of how we got to that solution or that recommendation that is the real disagreement with the board and with the community members that have spoken up. It's, I think, a reality that we all know going from sixty, what, sixty-five-hundred students that are in our heyday, sixty-six?
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five thousand students at our heyday to what we are today, it's, it's clear and obvious that this is where we, the direction, but it's, it's definitely the process, definitely would not disagree with you on that.
Well, I just, I appreciate all of the conversation. Well, I just, I appreciate all of the conversation. Any conversation that happens amongst the board provides us insight so that we can go back and do the work. Our ultimate goal is to present you with a budget that allows us, again, to deliver on a high-quality learning experience for every child while we remain as fiscally responsible as we can so that we, you know, have long-term solvency. So we appreciate the discussion. There's been many requests that I'm going to work with the team on, on getting back to you all. We'll provide many of them to you all during a board update. But Martha will share as much of what we gather at the next, at the next budget workshop as well. So thank you all so much for all of the feedback, and we'll continue to work towards bringing you a sound budget proposal.
And this meeting is adjourned at twelve oh five.